Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the ISD 279 School Board Work Session of December 8th, 2020. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.021 in the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this work session of the independent school district 279 School Board will be conducted via electronic means. Consistent with current state and federal pandemic guidance, Superintendent Corey McIntyre and myself, Board Chair Mike Ostafi, have determined that due to the health pandemic and emergency declaration, a meeting format allowing for in-person attendance is not practical or prudent for this work session. As a result, it is unfeasible for at least one board member, the superintendent or general counsel, to be physically present at the meeting location. It is also not feasible for members of the public to attend at the regular meeting location. Members of the public may monitor the work session electronically by streaming online on the district website. An archived copy of the video recording of this work session will also be available on the district website. The purpose of the School Board Work Session is to build trust and teamwork to exchange information and when applicable, provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at the regular board meetings. The outcomes of this evening's work session will be that board members will receive information on the School Resource Officers Partnership Model and the legislative platform. Board members, please respond that you are present on this video conference when I call your name. Director Thomas Brooks.
Here.
Director Kelsey Dawson-Wolken.
Here.
Director Tanya Simon.
Here.
I am here. Director Jackie Muscata-Jones.
Here.
Director Heather Douglas.
Here.
Superintendent Corey McIntyre.
Here.
Thank you all. The superintendent's cabinet and several guest presenters are logged on to this video conference as well. I will now ask Superintendent McIntyre to facilitate the agenda items for this evening's work session. Superintendent McIntyre.
All right, thank you, Chair Ostafi. And Chair Ostafi, I'll ask you to assist me in facilitating our comments and questions like we've gotten so good at doing virtually here over the last few months, so thank you. Good evening, board members. Welcome, Director Brooks, to our first work session. Welcome. And thank you, or welcome to cabinet members, and a special welcome to our guests this evening. Thank you for making accommodations to join us virtually. At our May School Board Meeting, the School Board approved the next three-year School Resource Officers Agreement with the Police Department of Brooklyn Park and Maple Grove. There was a desire at that time, and that has continued up really to the present time, to continue developing an understanding of our SRO program as it evolves and the partnership that we have as we work to improve from past and existing practices towards emerging best practices with this partnership. We have tentatively had this topic on our School Board Meeting calendar for some time, to be present, presented this year as we do each year, but with our focus on the impact of the pandemic on our operations and learning models the last few months, for both the school district and our police department partners, we now finally have the opportunity tonight to continue the conversation. So others will introduce a presentation in more detail, but from a high-level overview, the goal tonight is to tell our story about this partnership with a focus on relationships really being at the core of this student-centered partnership, having multiple perspectives and voices focused on the lived experience of our students and parents, understanding the evolving SRO, the service delivery model and training component, and understanding their current challenges that we're facing. Our conversations on an effective SRO program and partnership continue to change, and that leads to evolving efforts in the program. And I want to say on the front end, we know we have a lot of work to do to continue to improve, and that is our hope tonight, that you'll have a better understanding of those efforts. I want to thank again the participants in the presentation tonight for taking time to be with us and for their contributions. We really appreciate it. And now I'm going to introduce Assistant Superintendent Michael Lehan to help me with introducing the presentation tonight. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. Good evening, board, and obviously family and scholars. Welcome to this board meeting. As we enter the conversation tonight, I believe a pause is warranted, a moment to reflectively check in with ourselves as the topic of policing in schools is an emotional conversation. Our geographic positionality adds yet another dimension to this conversation. For many of us, we cannot unseen the inhumane death our collective community was subjected to this summer following the homicide of George Floyd. We have seen a call for intensive study around policing as a practice and certainly the roles of SROs play in schools. We are at a defining moment in our history, and we must meet the demands of these changing times. It is critically important for me, as a black male, to express that I show up dysregulated in this conversation as I carry my own generational truth that is felt deeply. It should go without saying, but sadly, it is essential to note that I am only speaking for myself and not all people of color, and certainly not for all black males. I offer you my experience as a principal of Osseo Senior High School, my interactions with the remarkable SROs that I had the opportunity and privilege of working alongside were nothing short of amazing. They were responsive to our scholars and our community. I trust each of them implicitly and care for them deeply, and I thank each of them for extending care to the community that I was responsible for during my time as principal at Osseo Senior High School. In May, a recommendation was brought forward to the School Board, and it was approved to renew the School Resource Officer Contract with the City of Brooklyn Park and the City of Maple Grove from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. Before this period, the school district and local agencies worked from a one-year contract. The purpose of this one-year contract was to use this time to enhance the School Resource Officer Contract Model within both cities. There are many enhancements made to the contracts, and you will hear about them this evening. We have gathered professionals from each city, school administrators, scholars, and families to engage this critical conversation. Tonight, we model our anti-racism School Board Resolution, specifically the call to continue efforts to provide a safe and welcoming school environment for each and every student working with the community and other government agencies. Again, I acknowledge this conversation evokes varying levels of emotions and perspectives. I affirm where you are. This evening, we offer you this presentation to provide a context of our partnership and the invested the invested and responsible individuals for sustaining our community's safety. I am confident in our relationships. To the extent we are willing to work in partnership, to the degree in which power and influence is a shared responsibility, and to the extent that knowledge occupies various margins of our community, then and only then will our communities transform. Thank you for holding space for this conversation, and thank you for revealing your passion that will create a more collaborative and informed community framework of action. With that, I invite Troy to introduce the team presenting this evening.
Thank you, Michael, and good evening, everyone. My name is Troy Schreifels. I'm the Director of Facilities and Transportation Operations. Before we get started today, I just want to make sure for general housekeeping, can everyone see the presentation? Okay? If I can get a thumbs up, there we go. Excellent. Sometimes I get going and I realize I'm talking but not displaying, so I want to make sure in this environment that I'm aware of that. So with that, good evening, Board Chair Ostafi, Superintendent McIntyre, members of the board, and our viewing audience. I am Troy Schreifels, Director of Facilities, Transportation, and Risk Management for Osseo Schools. I'd like to start out by thanking each of you with the opportunity tonight to share the history and the partnership we have in Osseo with our School Resource Program leaders. You may recall, back on May 26, we presented to the board two new agreements between the district and the cities of Maple Grove and Brooklyn Park, as Michael mentioned earlier. Historically, our district has worked with our law enforcement partners on three-year annual agreements to provide School Resource Officers in our secondary schools. In the spring of 2019, Dave Mordock and myself decided to bring forth a one-year agreement. The purpose behind this at the time was to be able to take a comprehensive look at our existing agreements. We wanted to study, review, and seek input, and ultimately propose a new enhanced three-year agreement for our district. Over that year, we reached out to metro area schools to discuss their programs with them. We also reviewed contracts and programs on a national level as well. We used the National Association of School Resource Officers, also known as NASRO, as a resource guide to help us with recommendations. And finally, we met with our city partners to discuss the enhancements and the things we wanted to bring forth in our new agreement and worked collaboratively with the City of Brooklyn Park and Maple Grove to come up with the contracts that were presented to you, the School Board, in May. In previous presentations, the School Board and the Risk Management Team have shared our highly effective and successful school safety and security plan that makes your school safe for all students to achieve their dreams and to be successful academically. In order to have a, in order to do this, we want to have a comprehensive plan that includes several key components. Those components include infrastructure such as radios, cameras, alarms, key card systems, and secure entrances, visitor management procedures, threat assessment procedures, mental health support, social and emotional support, highly-trained staff. It's important to note that our team is made up of principals, assistant principals, student management specialists, hall monitors, psychologists, and importantly, what we're speaking about tonight, effective School Resource Officers. At the School Board Meeting in May, we heard from several board members that they'd like a work session to learn more about the School Resource Officer Program. Tonight, we are pleased to provide you with and the community with the opportunity to learn more about our longstanding partnerships and our strong relationships that our organization, our staff, our students, and communities have built over the years with their law enforcement partners. You will also have the opportunity to hear from four students and their parents. There's two parents with two of our students about their lived experiences with our SROs. During the presentation, you'll also hear from three of our School Resource Officers, the department chiefs that oversee the law enforcement groups, and at the end, we'll open up the meeting for you to ask our students, parents, and School Resource Officers and our Risk Management Team any questions you might have. With that, I'd like to introduce you to our student and parent volunteers who agreed to share their experiences tonight with us. I'll start out with Michaela. Michaela, can you unmute and say hi?
Hi, everyone. My name is Michaela. I'm a recent graduate from Park Center Senior High.
Thank you, Michaela. We have Josh and Kelly.
Hello, I'm Josh. I am a Maple Grove student, 11th grader.
And I'm Kelly Clark, his father.
Welcome, Josh and Kelly. Caitlin?
Hello, I'm Caitlin, and I am a Osseo Senior High student.
Thank you, Caitlin. Then we have Megan and Patricia.
Hi, I'm Megan, 9th grader at Maple Grove Senior High.
And I'm Patricia, Megan's mom.
Thank you. Next, I'll introduce our team from the Brooklyn Park Law Enforcement Group. Emily?
Hi, everybody. I'm Detective Emily Kane. I'm part of our juvenile unit here. I'm at Park Center High School. I've been there for six years.
Thank you, Emily. Matthias?
Hello, my name is Matthias Gomez. I'm with Brooklyn Park. I'm the School Resource Officer at Northview Middle School. I've been there for almost two years now.
Thank you, Matthias. Chief Edelson?
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I come to you as the chief of Brooklyn Park. I've spent my entire here in Brooklyn Park as a police officer and also served as a School Resource Officer way back when.
Thank you, sir. I will now introduce our Maple Grove partners. Grant?
Hi, I'm Detective Grant Smith with Maple Grove Police Department. I am a School Resource Officer primarily at Osseo, but I float different schools to help out, and I have been here for six years.
Thank you, Grant. Andy?
Hi, I'm Andy Sandberg. I'm the sergeant that oversees our SRO program at Maple Grove Police Department. I was a former SRO at Osseo Middle School as well, so thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you, Andy. Jonathan? Oops, we can't hear you, Jonathan.
There we go. Try that again. Good evening. I'm John Waterknock. I'm the commander of the Services Division for the Maple Grove Police Department. I oversee our investigations and School Resource Officers. And in addition to that, I served five years at Maple Grove High School and also at Maple Grove Middle School.
Thank you, John. And we have Chief Warner.
Good evening. I'm Eric Warner, Chief of Police with Maple Grove. I want to say thank you for having me and my staff here today. I've been the chief here for about six and a half years now, and I come with experience from the Chicago area and also the southern metro area. And again, thank you for having us.
Thanks, Chief Warner. Lastly, I'd like to invite or introduce some of our admin staff that are on tonight. Kim?
Hi, I'm Kim Burling. I'm one of the assistant principals at Park Center Senior High. Thanks for having me tonight.
Thanks, Kim. Lastly, and I hope I didn't forget anybody else, but Mr. Dave Mordock?
I'm Dave Mordock. I'm the coordinator of Risk Management for Osseo Area Schools.
All right. And board members, tonight our outcomes will be, board members will learn about the School Resource Program used in Osseo schools. They'll also be informed about the new enhancements to the SRO agreements, and they will learn more about the important relationships our School Resource Officers have with students, staff, and community. From here, I'll turn it over to Dave Mordock to share more.
Good evening, Chair Ostafi, Superintendent McIntyre, members of the board. I'm Dave Mordock, coordinator of Risk Management for Osseo Area Schools, and I oversee the SRO program at the district level, and I'll be providing a brief overview of the program. The district has had School Resource Officers in our schools for over 30 years, and we currently have SROs at all of our secondary schools. Park Center has two officers, and Osseo Senior High has two, but one of those officers, Detective Grant mentioned, is considered a float officer, so that officer is based out of Osseo Senior High School with another SRO, but that officer then does provide support at other schools that Maple Grove oversees. In addition to the 10 officers assigned to our schools, each department has a sergeant that oversees the SROs for their department. Over the past 30 years, the district has developed deep relationships with both departments at all levels, from command staff to the officers that work in our schools. If we, the district, ever need guidance or support, both departments are just a phone call away and are always willing to help. Whether it be a threat requiring additional police presence at the school to providing a voice on our district Risk and Emergency Management Advisory Council or planning a vehicle parade for graduating eighth graders due to the COVID pandemic so that students, staff, and families can say goodbye one last time. Regardless of the need, Brooklyn Park and Maple Grove Police Departments are a valued partner with the district. Next slide, please. The district SRO program is fully funded through the Minnesota Safe Schools Levy. You may recall, the district entered into a three-year contract with the Brooklyn Park Police and the Maple Grove Police Departments this past July. I'd like to bring your attention to a few of those components of that contract. Next slide, please. The district worked collaboratively with the command staff of both departments to develop a contract that better reflected the best practices of a leading SRO program. I would like to highlight just some of the enhancements that were added to the contract. The first enhancement is officer selection. When we have an SRO opening in a school, myself and the building principal are invited to meet the SRO candidates as part of the selection process. It's important for the district and the department to ensure that we have the right person for the position. The next enhancement is officer training. In addition to having the right officer for the position, it's also important to have officers that are trained to be successful in that position. Being a School Resource Officer is very different than being a police officer that is working in a patrol position. And that's why we require specific training around being a School Resource Officer, whether that be through the National Association of School Resource Officers, NASRO, or the Minnesota School Safety Center. We also require all SROs to attend district training on a variety of topics that impact the work we do, from equity foundational training to PBIS. The last enhancement I'd like to touch on is our partnerships. Within the school and the district, we wanted to ensure that officers are connected and supported. At the beginning of each school year, we meet with the SROs and the site administration team to discuss the upcoming school year, any opportunities there are for engagement of staff and students, and expectations. This past fall, when we met as a group, we talked about the new SRO contract and the expectations and enhancements to that. At the district level, we also bring all the SROs together, along with their supervisor, several times a year to share information and address any opportunities or concerns. Next slide, please. We will now hear from three of our School Resource Officers to learn more about the day in the life of a School Resource Officer, the partnerships that SROs have with the schools they work in, as well as an overview of the juvenile justice system. I'm pleased to introduce Maple Grove Senior High, or I'm sorry, Maple Grove Detective Grant Smith. Detective Smith is assigned to Osseo Senior High.
Thank you, Dave. As you can see, that's a lot of the day that we do with students. I'm trying to work there, and they're taking selfies. So a lot of our interactions are students that will check in with us every day or during their lunch period or during passing time. And there's a couple of things that I wanted to share with you in the day in the life portion of the presentation. Last year, I was asked to present at RE/MAC, and at RE/MAC, I presented on a day in the life by just, the day that I went to present, I just took notes of the things I did that day. So between 7:00 AM and about 1:30 PM, that day, I took notes of the things that I had dealt with that day. And some themes with that, I want you to look for, relationship building with students, staff, and families, supporting safety in and outside of the building, education, and a resource for students, staff, and their families. So I'll just go through a couple of the things that day that I took notes on. I met with a student, or student and parent of a student who assisted in a assault in the building and was school staff there as well. I met with a student with assistant principal that was selling marijuana cookies and brownies in the school. We worked with administration and students' parents to address those issues. A student came to me to report that they were sexually assaulted by their stepfather. I worked with the student, and then I got them set up with a school social worker and cornerstone, which is a resource that we have here at Osseo Senior High School. I assisted a student who wished to speak with an investigator in a different jurisdiction about a theft that they were involved in. I assisted an administrator with getting a phone from a student that I had a relationship with. I convinced the student to, when I say convinced, I gave him a piece of candy to go to advisory, which they normally skip. Some students don't like to go to advisory as much as normal classes, so my kids get way too much Halloween candy, so I bring it in for the, for some of the students. I convinced a student, let's see, a student had a seizure in the back hallway. I assisted with getting them to the nurse. Something of note, when it comes to medicals, the police officers in the schools have radios that go directly to emergency medical services or fire or any other police resources. So we're able to very quickly get those resources to the building, and also we carry two things that are specifically that no one else in the school has access to, which is oxygen and Narcan, which is a drug that we can administer for opioid overdose. The next item was a bus driver stopped at the school to use, one of the school bus drivers stopped at the school to use the bathroom. Students were using illicit substances in the bathroom. I assist administration with locating students, making sure they didn't have any drugs in the school left, and contacting parents. The next item was theft of a phone from gym. I took a report from the student, worked with them and investigated where the phone went and attempted to get it back. I then had a meeting with a social worker about some of our athletes that were having mental health issues. I've worked very closely. My office is right next to the social worker, and we were very close together. Something of note with mental health issues, the police detectives in the building are the only ones in the building that sign emergency mental health holds for students that are going through an emergency mental health issue. So that's something that sometimes we have to work with our counselors and our social workers on. The next item was three students trying to sneak in the east door. I worked with the administration to locate the students, get them down to Student Services. A student was injured in gym class. I was able to get them an ambulance and assist with, assisted school nurse with taking care of a student. Another, the next item was a student was assaulted by another student in a gym hallway. I took pictures of the injuries, contacted both students' parents, and worked with school administration on the incident. I followed up with a child protection report. Something else to note is we are assigned cases that might involve the students, whether they be have done something, or they were a victim of something, or there may be a witness of something. We are assigned those cases that involve our students and students in the school. So we are the ones that are working on those cases for the students. The next item was a student missed a court date, and I helped them contact court. A lot of times, students have a lot of questions about, you know, it could be personal issues that they're dealing with or family, and we're able to resolve those issues by giving them the resources they need, kind of cut through the red tape. I make a lot of the phone calls for them because sometimes it's tough when you're, when you're younger to do that stuff, so sometimes I'll just call in to think for them and set that up. And the last item, I met with a student who was concerned about being sexually harassed by a customer at their work. So a lot of things in the school that we do deal with don't necessarily involve something that's happening that day. It could be something that's going on in the student's personal life or something that's going on in the community. And a lot of times, they see us as a trusted person they can come to and talk to about it. So we're able to help them through a lot of those issues that are going on, could be at home or in the community. So we're able to work with them on those things. And that was my day. Thank you very much.
I'm going to turn it over to, oops, I'm moving slides too fast. I apologize. I'm going to turn it over to Matthias. Or I'm sorry, there we go. Emily, sorry, Emily.
Thanks, Troy. Finally found the slide. All right, so Grant talked about a lot of the day-to-day stuff too, but there's a lot of other relationships that we have that's not just with students. We do collaborate on all sorts of levels in the school, and so the first topic I'll talk about is just some teacher collaboration. There is some classes that they do discuss police and the community and that kind of a thing. One elective class is crime and justice, and so my officers here at Park Center would go into the classroom and discuss some statutes because they are studying those things in that class, the statutes that pertain to use of force. We really keep the presentation short, and there is a whole lot of student engagement and questions that go on in there. Oftentimes, they do come back to our office and they want to talk about it more. Maybe they are interested with our Explorer program or interested in the profession, so we do open that up after we are in the classroom. Another main one that we do is we go into every single ninth-grade health class. It definitely helps us build the relationships with the fresh new ninth graders in the building. That used to discuss more of the community issues with police. We've gotten into a little bit more detail now within the last couple of years, bringing in our community engagement officer and really discussing diversity amongst our workforce and hoping that community really wants the diversity along with us, and so we do discuss that, discuss our opportunities of getting into the profession as far as Explorers and the Cadet Program. We do get into the controversial issues and We do get into the controversial issues and we don't shy away from those. We have very honest conversations with the students. Some are really reluctant to be in the class and in the end, they're the ones that are the most engaged and the most talkative. And this happened to me, why would this happen to me or my family? And so we have some really, really, really good conversations with the students in that way. We also go into the personal safety fight class. Me particularly, I do investigations for human trafficking and it's not a fun conversation, however, this population and this age group is most at risk. And so any education opportunities we have, we do that. And so we, I go into that class as well and discuss that. Most of those engagements, like I said, really result in just more conversations. And they're not just seeing us in the hallways or seeing us during negative situations. They see us in their classrooms and working with their teachers. Also, the athletic coordinator and working at special events, we do coordinate with the athletic director. We set up the police presence that you see at any games, any dances or even graduation. And we do try to keep it within our juvenile unit. So you would see some SROs from Northview, from Brooklyn Middle. We try to keep it that way just because we're most familiar with the kids and we are trained to deal with different situations. So it's definitely helpful for us to be at the games. We watch behavior a little bit differently than administration. We pick up on cues. We know the community issues. So it just makes sense to have us there, kind of make the team aware of what's going on if they want to go have a conversation with the student and just make sure everything's okay. It's been helpful and we've been very proactive that way. Let's see. Some of it too is just the planning of the access to the events. If there's a safety issue or if there's where people should be accessing the building instead of another place, if we've had problems, we work with the athletic director for that as well. We do collaborate and go over to Osseo Senior for some games. If PC's playing Osseo for basketball, it kind of makes sense for Grant and I to be there. So we do that. We go to different schools, even been down into Armstrong and that kind of stuff, so. And then the most important, I guess, too, would be our administrative collaboration. A lot of the stuff like Grant said is really not police-related. It's where children just need some other resources. Maybe they need a referral to the therapist or the social worker or they're having some child protection involvement. And we do get assigned some cases, but if it's another city, these, the kids really have a problem collaborating and meeting with them. So we do help them in those types of situations as well. We do meet with staff on a regular basis with our student support meetings. We are part of the threat assessment team, which is made up of a bunch of staff in the building. And that's just making sure that we're aware of maybe some rising issues with some of our kids that are a little bit concerning for us and showing some concerning behaviors. So we do collaborate strongly on those ones. Last year for the 2019-2020 school year at Park Center was a little interesting and a little rough. And so there was definitely a lot of collaboration and at least on the district level too, as far as coming to our building and really helping our team. So that was great and very helpful. Also, there's just a lot of issues that come up with our SMSs in the building and they get, they hear a lot of information from parents and hear about issues in the community. And so we really, we try to keep the dialogue open. If something happened the night before at a nearby apartment complex or something, that we know some of it's going to trickle over. So it's beneficial for us to really get ahead of it and be proactive, so. That definitely helped us squash a few issues. So I did invite Assistant Principal Burling and I'll let her speak for a little bit just for her voice.
Okay, thank you, Officer Emily. My name is Kim Burling. I'm one of the APs at Park Center Senior High. And I have worked over the last couple of years with behavior specifically. So I've worked directly with Officer Emily, Officer Core and the Brooklyn Park Police Department. I truly, truly appreciate their services and have a lot of respect for the work that they do and the support that they provide us at Park Center. I personally believe having Officer Core and Officer Emily on site, so they have offices right in our building, has been extremely important and valuable to our school community. For one, speaking from an administrative point of view, we really consider them part of the administrative team. We meet with them, as Emily had stated, we meet with them on a weekly basis, every Monday to touch base and exchange information. And if you're doing behavior like I have for the last couple of years, I actually probably meet with them daily, a couple of times a day to collaborate. While we're meeting, we're consistently sharing critical information. So Officer Emily and Officer Core are letting us know what's going on out in the community. A lot of times, what happened the night before could be brought back into our school and we want to get ahead of it. And vice versa, we're letting them know what's happening on a day-to-day basis with our students because what's happening in school can be carried out into the community. So the bottom line, this relationship, this collaboration that we have is so important because it allows us to be proactive rather than reactive. We're often ahead of the game before an incident becomes serious and we're putting out fires before they even get started. And I can say, as Emily said, we had quite a year last year and we prevented so many situations that have could have gotten very, very serious because of us being as proactive as possible. I just want to second and say that our SROs have developed extremely positive relationships with our students and our staff. Our kids really trust our SROs. They're not afraid of our police officers. They know that our police officers are there to support and to help them. Our kids are, our students are very open to talking with the officers and sharing information. And I'll just give you an example of something. It's a social media. With social media, the kids are on it constantly. And a lot of times, they have exchanges with students from other schools. So for instance, we had a situation where our kids were exchanging words with some kids from North. Some of our students were comfortable enough to come and share that with admin. And of course, we shared that with our SROs. They contacted the SROs over at North High School and they were able to deal with their students and we were able to deal with ours and we could put an end to it before it even got started. So that's just an example of us collaborating together, the kids feeling comfortable, sharing information. You would be surprised by how much information the kids actually give to us. The kids, the students also feel really comfortable going to them, to the SROs, Officer Emily and Core, sharing their personal and family issues. Many times, they will come to us and they know that we trust the officers. And so the kids are willing to go and share what's going on in their personal lives with them so that the officers can provide some help and support. Finally, as Emily already spoke to, but I'm going to reiterate, it's really important that our officers are there to help when chaperoning sporting events and school events such as our dances, basketball games, football games. It's really beneficial because they know and have developed the relationships with our students. So when other kids are coming from other schools, they can identify who our kids are. They they know what's going on in their lives. They know their stories. They can tell by the look on their face if they're agitated, if they're bothered, if something, they just have that. They can pick up on the cues to be able to tell if something's going to happen. So that's really beneficial to have them there chaperoning our own students. Let's see, they are definitely beneficial with helping with emergency situations, which has already been mentioned, but with medical assistance and any types of mental health crises. They are on scene with administration and making the phone calls to the emergency, the ambulance or whoever needs to be coming, fire department. And last but not least, and this is the most important, and they are there for the safety and security of every single student and every single staff member at Park Center. And I can tell you, they are willing to jump in and intervene whenever necessary. They would do whatever they need to do to keep our students safe, our teachers safe, our staff safe so that we can have a positive learning environment at Park Center. And I really feel by having their presence in the building, it really creates a sense of security for everybody who is at Park Center. I believe that Park Center Senior High is a safe learning environment and a lot of that has to do with having Officer Emily and Officer Core on site and available to help us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kim Burling. I will turn it over to Matthias, our SRO over at Northview Middle School. Matthias.
Thank you, and thank you to the board for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. The topic that I was gonna talk about, I'm going to talk about the juvenile justice system. You all know the juvenile justice system can be a whole presentation on itself. But I wanted to talk about our perception of the juvenile justice system and what are some of our goals. And research has, research has shown that when a young person is involved in the juvenile justice system, they're often negatively affected by that experience. So one of our main goals as school resource officers is to keeping the students in the school and away from juvenile court. We do this in a different ways and we have different strategies and and ways to prevent our students from having to go through that experience. And one of them is, some of them is our education, probation, mediation and counseling. We do education by either inside or outside of the classroom, by presentations or getting to know our students, talking to them in the hallways and providing them with the information for them to be successful. We try to do prevention and be proactive, getting to know our students. And and the school dynamics is very important. It's something that we do well, to be able to recognize when anything is about to happen. And that is always possible with a collaboration with administrators. Also by mediation, when it's feasible, we like to, especially myself, bring everyone involved in any type of incident to the table to be able to work on a solution on any type of problems that they have without having to, without involving the either the courts or the juvenile justice system or any type of criminal case. And all, and lastly, counseling. I think we see ourselves as informal counselors. But even though sometimes we're not able to provide that service, we are able to refer them, like Emily just said, to the appropriate service, either mental health, child protection services, or even if you're one, some of our students are victims of domestic violence, we're able to pick up on that and follow up on that and make sure that they're receiving the services that they need. A very important program that we use to be able to keep our students in school is juvenile diversion programs. I'm pretty sure that some of you are familiar with those programs. These juvenile diversion programs are really, really important for us and because they provide a service to eligible youth to hold them accountable instead of having any other incidents or cases charged in juvenile court. And to point out some of the benefits of the juvenile diversion programs in Brooklyn Park, we use Northern Start. I know Hennepin County use Headway Youth. The diversion program is an opportunity for our students to avoid being charged with any type of criminal case and having to go through juvenile court. Some of those court cases can be lengthy and some of the diversion programs require our students and the youth to accept responsibility for their own actions. Like I said before, this, our main goal is to try to keep our students away from the courts so they can be, away from the courts so they can be successful. Some of the agreements that these diversion programs have is the students have to attend school. They gotta follow the rules from their homes and remain law-abiding without reoffending. And except, most important is, in my case, I believe is accept responsibility for the offenses and acknowledge what was done, what was wrong. Sometimes the juvenile justice system can be unavoidable for an array of different factors. But I wanted to point out the main difference between juvenile proceedings and adult court. On one hand, adult courts are designed to determine criminal responsibility and punishment. However, criminal, juvenile proceedings are designed to protect the child and the student from the consequences of their own actions. They're more geared to develop individual responsibility, focus on rehabilitation and at the same time trying to promote public safety. Like some of my colleagues just spoke before, our collaboration with administrators makes it possible for us to divert our students from the juvenile justice system so they can be more successful. And collaboration is very important for us to be able to achieve this. That's all I have for today.
Thank you, Matthias. I wanted to bring in a student voice, Michaela, who is a recent Park Center graduate to share a little bit more regarding an experience she had with the juvenile justice system. Michaela, good evening.
Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Michaela. As you said, I am a Park Center recent, I'm a recent Park Center graduate graduate. And I just wanted to share a personal experience that I had myself where I saw firsthand implant and implementing the diversion program. And I had a close friend of mine that was reported as a runaway by her foster parents. And I honestly didn't really know much about the situation at first. And then she contacted me about it and I was able to personally go to our school resource officers and tell them about it where they then took action where they were able to get my friend into the school and talk to her personally and just give her that comfort of, comfortable feeling, knowing that, you know, she didn't have to go to the police department about it. She could go to familiar faces. And so she then ended up coming to school, coming back to school and talking to our school resource officers and they were able to figure out what was going on at home and why she didn't want to be home and why things were, why she was filed as a runaway. And they kind of took things into their hands and made it to where it was less of a scary situation. Like she felt like she was then being targeted by police because she was filed as a runaway. She felt like she could come to the school and talk to them personally and get things figured out with people that she knew and with officers, with faces that she was familiar with. And that's just kind of an experience I had where they, I seen our school resource officers at Park Center Senior High implementing their diversion program.
Thank you, Michaela. Appreciate that. We'll come back for some more information from you shortly.
Thank you, Michaela, for sharing. When we reflect on the SRO program, it's important to hear from our students. One way this is accomplished is through the Minnesota Department of Education Student Surveys that students in grades five, eight, nine and eleven are participate in every three years. You may recall, this survey was presented to the school board on January 28th of this past year. There are four questions in the survey that directly are related to SROs and are asked of students in grades eight, nine and 11. One question in particular reads, "I think it is a good idea to have an SRO or police officer at our school." In Osseo area schools, over 94% of responding students strongly agreed or agreed with this statement. The table before you breaks down the responses to this question by race. Over 96% of Asian students strongly agreed or agreed it was good to have an SRO in their school. Over 89% of black students strongly agreed or agreed with this. 96% of Hispanic students strongly agreed or agreed with this statement. Over 97% of white students strongly agreed or agreed with this. And lastly, over 92% of multi-racial students strongly agreed or agreed that it was a good idea to have an SRO at their school. I will once again turn it over to Park Center alumni, Michaela, to share her experience.
I would just like to share a few experiences with the SROs and the SROs at Park Center that I personally had when, whether it be in relationship-wise or educational-wise. So just kind of going back to my first experience with police officers in general. My first actual experience with police officers was in school, which kind of made it more securing for me and more comfortable for me when it came to seeing cops that were on patrol or on the streets. That experience I had was at Northview Middle School, actually. And it was in this program called YoPro that the police helped sponsor at our school. It was an after-school program that we did where we got to interact with not only the police officers. It was after school program that we did where we got to interact with not only the police officers, but also a, a former NFL player. And we just kind of played recreational sports, football, and we got to be able to build that bond with the police officers outside of school and outside of juvenile reasons. Then I also have an encounter I had with, at Park Center Senior High where when I first met the SROs at the Park, at Park Center Senior High was when I first joined or first started going to that school in ninth grade and I also began the explorers program. And I saw similar faces from when I was in the police department and also when I was in school. And so that really helped build a confidence and a relationship with not only the officers, but also with the police department. Then also kind of a little bit of what it was like in the day of me going to Park Center Senior High and how the resource officers were implemented into my day. So, every day I made it my mission, I guess you could say, where I would make sure when I first got to school, I'd check in with the school resource officer Emily and I would just tell her, you know, how was my night? Whether if I had a game the day before or something, how the game went or anything like that. I just felt like I could always go to her to have a good conversation and to get anything off my chest. Then I would also make sure that I stopped in on my way to lunch or during lunch and we'd sit there and have a conversation about how the day went so far, how my classes are going, how are my grades? And she always made sure to just check up on me and make sure everything was okay with me and made sure that schooling was okay and that I was in a good spot. Then also at the end of the day, when the school ended, when the school day ended, I would make sure that I stopped by in the lunchroom where they were most often at to make sure that there weren't any problems or complications going on at the end of the day. Because that's where a large group of kids like to commute to and in their day at. So, I would always see her in there, her along with Cor, our other officer at the school. And often either they would be headed out to a football game or soccer game or track event or something else that also involved the school. And so it kind of gave me that sense that not only are they here in the school with us, but they're here supporting us in our sporting activities. They're here supporting us in our outdoor activities and our after school activities and the dances and anything like that. So, it gave me a sense that, you know, they're not here to prevent, they're not here to police us, but they're here to protect us and be with us through our high school experience and through our outside experiences as well. Then I also have a younger brother and he's an African American male. And so kind of just, there's that stereotype that, you know, African American males are targeted by police officers. And so going into middle school and high school, my brother was kind of, you know, the one that would be like, you know, I don't want to be around police officers. I don't trust police officers, things like that. Then in middle school, when he was introduced to our, the SRO at North, Northview Middle School, he began, he began to tell me that he feels more comfortable with the police officers. And now he knows that when he's on the streets and he sees a familiar face, which is Matthias or whoever else was working at North, Northview at the time, he felt more secure and confident and like that they were there for him and not against him. And they weren't looking at him, but with him. Then I also wanted to just talk a little bit about some events that happened at the school where I could see that the officers at the school were there with us and were working with us and there for us. And the first thing I would like to talk about is the walkout that we held. I believe it was in the year of twenty seventeen or eighteen, after that mass school shooting. And we had our walkout and our silent moment outside. And it was this really scary moment for a lot of kids and a really scary moment for me personally. Because it's like, you know, we just had this incident where a school was shot up and now we're all gathering together in a large group. We, you know, there could be someone that wants to, you know, come and harm us. But I looked around and I noticed not only were the admin and the teachers and the other resource people in the school standing with us and around us, but also our school resource officers were standing there with us and around us, not only to protect us, but to support us in what was going on in the world. Then also I just wanted to talk about something that kind of happened after that, after that and after the school shooting was there was a school shooting training held that I was kind of introduced to through the explorers program and also through our school resource officers. And not only did I get to go and participate in that training, but I got to participate with some of the resource officers that were at my school. So, it made me feel more confident that the, they had the right training and the proper trainings to protect us in our schools and to be there for us in our schools. And then also outside of schools and how are the relationships look like outside of school? I've seen, I've, there's been times where I've seen the school resource officers at the store or out to eat or even in my apartment complex where they're handling situations with my neighbors and stuff. And I just, it's, it's always there that comfort feeling like I can say hi to you and I can speak to you and not be afraid of what will happen after that or know that you will speak to me as well. And personally with people who have had problems in my building and stuff like that. I've even had my mom personally tell people, you know, that she's encountered that have had problems where they need to involve a police officer or legal matters that she would personally recommend our school resource officers or prior school resource officers that we had. Just because she know that the connection that we had with them and the stories we come home and tell her about our school resource officers were always good. And she knew that nobody would have a problem with those officers because she, they, they had that good connection and good respect for the community along with our school students.
Thank you, Michaela. We appreciate you inserting your voice in this opportunity. And next I'm gonna turn it over to Kelly and Josh. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. This is Kelly Click. Joshua had to step away. My perspective on is I've got an email from Kathy and she asked me about some information with Joshua. And his relationship with the officers has been basically a relationship building perspective. He started sixth grade in the ASD Connect program. And at that point in time period, that was the first time he's been to school. So, he was having some issues and some problems there, but basically he was having a couple incidents there. And so Officer Kathy was able to create a sticker chart sheet for him and had all of the police cars and information on a sticker chart. So, if he was out without having any incidents, he was able to get a tour of a squad car. So, after that perspective, he was able to, Officer Mathwig came out with a squad car and he was able to get the tour of the squad car, be able to put on his SWAT gear and basically gave Joshua the perspective that the police officers are safe, a safe people and that he didn't need to worry about them. And he basically got more of a positive experience working with the SRO that he had there at Maple Grove. So, that's the information that I wanted to share. Thanks very much.
I appreciate your time, Kelly, and thank Josh as well for joining us this evening as well. I will invite Caitlin to share her story.
Hello, I'm Caitlin. When I went to Osiau Middle School, I took part in the Lunch with Liaison program. This program built relationships between students and our in-school resource officer, Detective Modine. We could talk about issues that were important to us. We listened to each other's stories and Detective Modine helped us work through things together. We also played games and could ask questions about police officers. As students, we felt like he was an adult in the building that we could trust. It's an opportunity that helps students feel more comfortable if they need to approach an officer outside of school. He taught us that police aren't people we should be afraid of, but people we can come to for help. The group was fun and really important to me. And also inspired my interest in detective work and helped a lot of my fellow students with things going on in their lives. Thank you for having me. That's all I have.
Thank you, Caitlin. And I'm guessing someday we might see you on this presentation as maybe an SRO, if it is that interesting for you. So, we look forward to that. I'm gonna turn it over to Megan and Patricia to share their story.
Hi, so I wasn't really, I didn't have close relations with Officer Kathy until eighth grade, but in sixth and seventh grade, when I started in middle school, having a police officer there made me feel comfortable going to school just because I knew that I would always be safe and if anything happened that the police officer would be there to protect me. In eighth grade, I was called down to the office and Officer Kathy, my SRO, speak to me and my whole life I have had relationships with police officers because of issues with my dad and all that stuff. So, I've always been comfortable around police officers and just people in uniforms. So, yeah, it, it made me feel really comfortable talking to her and she treated me as a person and not just another case, which also made me feel more comfortable opening up. And she was really respectful and didn't pry and was really respectful of my boundaries, which I found to be refreshing.
Officer Detective Hokey helped me, helped my family and myself a lot. She, I had to go to the office since my ex-husband attended some conferences and was going to the nurse as well, going to the school in and out. I do have an order of protection in a DECO, a DECO. And he was violating those orders. Detective Hokey helped me put a case together. We had several meetings and conversations. And again, she made me feel very comfortable. She was really helpful. She was a great resource. She was able to collect all of the police reports and went through them with me and put a case together to help me send it to the DA and that, with that, my ex-husband was, did get arrested and go to jail for that. Again, she was exceptional and helping my daughter stay safe and in myself.
Thank you, Patricia and Megan, for sharing this information with our group tonight. From here, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Warner and Chief Ellison to share a little bit about their philosophy of our school SRO programs from their respective cities. And I'll let you guys toss a coin. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first, Troy. Thank you. As I had said earlier, I'm not gonna take up a ton of your time, but I come to you with kind of two different hats. I've been an SRO. I'm gonna date myself. I was an SRO under then Principal Kelly, our, under Principal Kate McGuire and Assistant Principal Kelly Parpar, who I saw whose name is on here. So, that dates me a little bit. You know, we've talked a lot about relationship building and this is how I view the importance of relationship building. Both from, you know, your students' perspective, your staff perspective and the community perspective is should you need police on your campus and you need to call nine-one-one, the benefit of having a, an SRO there versus having a patrol response, I think, can't be emphasized enough. And I say that because as an SRO, I know what I did to help smooth issues over for both the student and administration. If you have a patrol officer respond, it's not that they don't have empathy or unable to do the job. They're really there, like any other call for service. They're there to restore peace and to investigate whether or not a crime occurred. When you have an SRO available, they can take all kinds of other things into consideration. They may know the student. They may know the family. They already know administration. And they're really there. I think it's spelled out very well in the contract. They are not there to simply refer your students to the juvenile justice system. As Matthias said, it's their job to keep kids out of the school or out of the juvenile justice system. I mean, I know I did and I know Matthias and Emily, we've gone, we, we go so far as to give the kids a ride home. We have meetings with parents and this is all the day of the incident. You're not gonna get that with the patrol officer because they have lots of other things that they need to accomplish. So, I just wanted to make sure I shared that with the board. And I, again, I think the contract we put together lays that out extremely well. Having said all of that, you know, I can speak for the SROs here in Brooklyn Park and I can speak for officers across the country. We are in definitely uncharted waters right now. You know, the death of George Floyd, although it happened in the city of Minneapolis, has set us back here in the city of Brooklyn Park years with our community and police relations. And we realize and we understand that we have to work ten times harder now than we did before to get that trust back. And to me, I'd look at no other program to begin to rebuild that trust than our SROs dealing with your students in your schools. So, I would just like you to take that into consideration. Eric, I've babble on long enough. I'll give it to you.
Craig, thanks for giving it to me. You didn't leave me much to say, so especially was everything that's been said. I just want to first talk about Maple Grove Police Department. We hire tremendously talented people who deeply care about people and that have relationships and the respect and dignity of everybody in mind that we serve. And we take that into the SRO program and bring that mindset into our schools. We've heard relationships, see each other and have positive interactions. How do we collaborate and are we proactive in dealing with the various issues that across all of our different disciplines or responsibilities? And we find solutions and ultimately we have very strong relationships in a safe environment. And so, as I, as I look at all of that's been said, I just wanted to talk a little bit about George Floyd and his death. As I said in my statement that I put out that that incident, it was just, they violated the respect of human life was the bottom line in that. And I can't even begin to describe how that has affected different communities, different backgrounds. But I can't imagine what it would have been like to address that issue or start to understand that if I didn't have this SRO program in place where we had those strong partnerships, those strong relationships, where we can start to understand that and then continue to move forward as our community start to heal and understand. So, I think we've been able to begin to repair some of that, the trust and the relationships that have been hurt and set us back, as Craig said, years. But I think even though the relationships and the trust is strained because of this program, that's gonna help us overcome that. So, thank you for your time to speak tonight.
Thank you, Chief. And before we turn it over for questions, I just wanted to extend my gratitude and thanks to our law enforcement partners and our students and their parents that joined us tonight. It takes a lot of courage to get onto a public forum like this and share your story. I know that when we put a call out, we work closely with our SROs to, to find some narrative that we hope will provide you some insight into some of the work. And this is just, this is just a little bit of it. I've worked for the last four and a half to five years with our SRO team and I've been highly impressed, as the chief has mentioned, about the relationship and partnership. At a moment's notice, we've been able to call them in and provide additional support and resources like we've needed to keep the calm in our schools, to maintain safety and security and to help provide support. I have time and time again seen officers go out of their way to go above and beyond to support that. With that being said, I also know, and that's why Dave and I stepped back, back in two thousand nineteen, it's always an opportunity for continuous improvement. There's always ways to look at things. And one of the things that we are doing that wasn't shared tonight is, you know, there'll be an annual report that's provided each year that assesses the SRO program and provides the feedback that we will be sharing with the board and it will be a public document, kind of a state of the union from each police department on what's going on. What are the things that happened in the department and with our schools that they serve? What are the, what are the statistics and information that were born out of those relationships? So, we can continue to measure and improve our system because I believe that, as, as many have said tonight, we have a lot of work ahead of us, but at the same time, I do want to highlight the great work that's been done. There's over thirty years of relationship here. There's several officers that have worked in our system that were also graduates of our system, that became officers and then SROs and then have moved up the chain. And that just shows you the relationships we've had and where we're headed next. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the board for questions that you have for the group. Any of the parents or students they'd like to talk to or our law enforcement partners. So, I'll open it up. And I don't know if Cory or And I don't know if if Corey or Mike, you're gonna uh DJ this, but if I'll turn it over to you guys.
Yeah, I will take it. Thank you, Troy. Appreciate it. And and again, thank you, everybody for uh your stories and presentation. Uh, I'm gonna go through uh questions and let's start with two questions uh per person and we'll go in the order of what was on the uh. Uh, uh, the roll call. So uh, uh Director Brooks, uh do you have any questions for our uh our team?
I do. I have several questions, actually. Um so uh first, I just wanna say. That I appreciate this presentation today, um and especially appreciate. Um, the stories that were told today from students, um graduates, um and family members. That's two. Okay, so the. I guess I'll kind of pair, I guess, two of my questions together. So one would be. What work is being done now by SROs to maintain some of the relationships I know that you've worked so hard for? Um over these years, um particularly with students being in distance. Um so that would be one. Um, so yeah, I guess I'll start with that one and have a follow up to that as well.
Any particular chief or SRO wanna handle that? No one raises their hand. I'm gonna have to call a name.
I think it'd be best have be best to have an SRO answer that question. I know that they've been doing a lot of work in the school. Emily or Matias?
I can speak to uh for myself initially, like uh right now with this uh complete distance learning they were doing is. It's been uh honestly very difficult to uh uh build those relationships. I seen that even with uh or hybrid model. Uh, uh the masks, the social distancing. And all those uh new requirements that we uh have to follow this year. It was already very difficult for us to build this relationship because uh to be honest, what we do. Uh, in the school when we are out in the hall is uh making, building relationships, uh starting conversation with students. It's usually uh spontaneous and that was in my case uh difficult and uh right now when uh. Uh us being away from uh the students. Uh, myself, I've been going to the uh school. Uh almost daily, talking to the secretaries and the the staff that are still working there. Uh, I've been invited to participate in some of the events that they do with the students online. Uh, uh, and I actually I have requested them to uh uh let me know when they have. Either they were planning on doing bingo online to participate with them and. Also staying at the uh uh I'm staying at the school. I get to see some of the students, they come and pick up lunches during lunch uh with the la- with the kitchen staff. And also uh with the school store when they come and pick up some of the prices, the stool, the school now is all. Some of the staff stays at the school until around uh five PM on Wednesdays. Uh for students to stop by and uh get some of those items that they uh have. Uh gathered from the school store that are important for them for these holidays. And that's another opportunity for us to at least get to say hi, get to see some of them. And uh trying to maintain this relationship. But like I said before, even when we had the hybrid uh. Uh model, it was already very difficult uh to build a relationship where they can really have a face-to-face conversation with the students.
I can chime just a little bit then if you a little bit more info too. So along with the Google meets and stuff. We do so um collaborate a lot with social workers, especially because they are getting a lot more referrals as well. Um, just kind of a sidebar is um association donation to some of our McKinney Ventos and our holiday gift bags that go out. So we're kind of coordinating with the social worker and getting some more of those things to hand out to them, especially when they. They need it most right now. So a lot of the the stuff that we do too is not just. Criminal and juvenile justice. It's a lot of the outreach that we do as well. So that's that's more important right now than ever.
My next question is actually sort of related to outreach. Um so and it it may be. More appropriate for one of the chiefs. Um so I've had. The the pleasure of actually um getting to learn from uh Chief Envoldson um in the Brooklyn Park Police Department. Um just on a lot of the work they're doing uh with community engagement, particularly with youth. Um, and so I think one of the questions that I have is how are. How is the SRO program and the community engagement officers um with the police departments? How are they working together to identify any overlaps uh between youth? Um and schools and in the community? Um and how are you sort of strategizing? With all of those various resources to to be proactive?
Also, I I can speak to that. Um. You're right, Thomas. It's it it's a challenge and I think we are overlapping in some areas and quite honestly, I'm okay with that. Because, as I had said earlier, we realize that this is gonna take some time. And it's gonna take a lot of time. But I can share, I think Emily did say. Or Matias did say that our community engagement officer does come into the school and does teach uh at that location. We also have our community uh engagement officer very connected with our Recreation and Parks Department. So the Zane Wood Recreation Center and some of those other places. So that's where we catch students, you know, especially now during COVID. Um, we can catch students who have had their homework done or haven't had their homework done. And are at Zane Wood uh Recreation Center. So we can interact with them as well. And I know that. Emily, Matias and and Matt are very well connected on, as they had said earlier, sharing. Things in the community that can go into the school and vice versa. Things in the school that can go out into the community. So. They really provide, you know, from my perspective, they really provide man staff and our supervision team. With the intelligence that we need to work on some of the events or somewhat some something that may. They believe is gonna be a potential issue in the school or in the community.
Uh from Maple Grove standpoint, um there's a lot of overlap of what is taking place out on the street. Um, we have a thing called zone leadership and ownership. And so that's more of a patrol-based um uh program. Where the officers are assigned to specific geographic areas for a a long period of time. And their responsibility is primarily is to uh develop connections and relationships in those neighborhoods. In in those areas to understand what the issues are going on. And then it's their responsibility to work with their supervisor or other areas of the police department. Or the school district or other resources that they need to bring in um to those issues. So if they have an issue, they can understand what it is if it's in a home. And then they can come up with a long-term solution. And then we try and uh coordinate uh the resources, whatever those resources are. And then um with our school resource officers, um it it goes as far as even down into the elementary level with our dare officers. Where we have that connection on a day-to-day basis. So all of those resources are um um communicating within our police department. And I just also wanna say the relationship between both of our agencies, um we communicate um. Across our agencies or any other agency that we need to to understand what the issues are and uh come up with solutions.
Thank you, Chiefs. Uh Director Brooks, I'll uh we'll we'll go around and we'll come back if you have any additional questions. Uh, with that, next up is uh Director Dawson Walton.
Hi. Well, first, you know, I'm echo, you know, I'm just so thankful for uh the parent, your families and um students for being on this call, even. Michaela, you who graduated. Um so I I really appreciate um your insight. And you know, your expression and experiences with our with the SROs um at our schools. Um, because I think that. I think we can't say it enough that a trusted adult is so important um in our in our in our schools, at community for our students. And so. Um, and it's critical to success. So I'm I'm excited about, I'm excited about that and I loved hearing about everyone. Excuse me, heartfelt experiences and I appreciate you sharing. Um, and I, you know, I remember, you know, this this to me, this discussion I wish would have happened um. In May. Um we were getting ready to vote. I'll never forget that day. We were getting ready to vote. On the contract, the three-year contract, the day after George Floyd is murdered. That was really hard, you know, because. Um, it was a, it was a, I think, a a gut-wrenching uh uh. Situation that happened um that spurred a national movement that I think we're s- we are still in. And you know, Chief Warner, I um, you you said it. I I thank you so much for saying what you said. Um I think that. Um, not only did the murder of George Floyd, you know, I know that like before this, there was a lot of work going into revamping this program. And I'm really curious as and you I you really spoke to that, both of you did, um, same with Chief Envoldson, um. But just the impact in the in the changes that have been made and more the mentality of um. Of our officers and what that means and and recognizing that some trust has been broken. And I think that it's created. Um, more of a divide in our community than anything when we really need to be coming together, right? And so. Um, so I I just wanted to say say thank you for saying that. I I really appreciate you um lifting that up. Um, you know, my question is round with the SRO program. Um. I really believe like that all the onus shouldn't be on law enforcement, right, to fix things, right? Whether it's the juvenile justice system or. Whatever it is. And it shouldn't just be on teachers and it shouldn't just be, you know, on ESPs. Um or on parents. So that how do we, you know, that we all need to come together. And I think we all kind of different pieces of the the puzzle, right? And so. Um, this is a question probably for combination between um the police chiefs and then and SROs and then our school. But how are the programs connecting? Like I think about, I've learned a lot over this last year on the ramp program, the counseling program, right? And to really start to. Meet the needs of our students um uh in a way that that kind of anticipates what they're what they're what they're going to and really focus on our our. Counselors. How does that or any of our counseling programs fit into the work that our SROs are doing? To give that holistic um. Kind of perspective um and help for our students.
I can s- speak for um at OSHA Senior, uh we use Cornerstone and that's also what we use in the community. Um for our domestic abuse advocates. And we use them for any type of orders um that people might need. Um but we use them here in the school for students that are, you know, they could be in the criminal justice system or they could just be dealing with. Mental health or they could be a victim of something and they just need that additional uh mental health support and someone to talk to. And um I'll use it in coordination with events that might happen um or incidents that students are involved in. And I will um just, maybe the student doesn't wanna talk to administration. Maybe it's something in the community. Um but I'll offer it to them that they can um use Cornerstone. And uh resolve some of those issues. Or I'll say, I think it'd be a really good idea. I don't know if you wanna keep talking to me about this, but. I think you need to talk to someone. And um I'll offer it to them and a lot of times they'll take me up on it. And they'll find it very beneficial. If uh Cornerstone needs to follow back up with something. Uh where the student wants to talk again about it, they will uh come back to me and uh and but it's very, very helpful. And we're uh we're constantly using them uh on a daily basis. When I would say, I I I know that you had heard Grant talk earlier, you know, the day and the life of Grant. And I think two, if not three. Of his examples revolved around child protection issues. Um, very, very sensitive cases, clearly. Sometimes that involves parents, sometimes it does not. Um, so we, and I I'm not sure if Maple Grove does, but we have two. Henepin County Child Protection Workers that are office out of the Brooklyn Park Police Department. So at any point, Matias or Emily can reach out and get that service, both to help them investigate the case. And also to make sure that that child's gonna be safe that night and every night following that. So I I think that. That's an important one. The second one for us, this is, we found to be a little more problematic, but we created a mental health unit and we have a. Uh, mental health professional from Henepin County that actually offices out of Brooklyn Park as well. We've found it's a little more difficult, especially in dealing with juveniles related to consent. Getting consent on their their medical history, those kind of things. It's much easier with adults. But that is another resource that's available. Not only to Matias and Gomez, but uh for all of the officers.
I just wanna address the um the the one example that was mentioned, the word Danko was used, um which is obviously a court order that centers around domestic violence. And um here in Maple Grove, we've put a a significant emphasis on domestic violence on uh the mental health issues. Um over the past several years. And I just think there's this general philosophy that we operate uh under, whether it's on the street. Um, our investigations unit or it's in the school resource officers, that these problems aren't ours alone. And the only way that we're gonna have um good solutions. Before we even get to the criminal justice system and and hopefully as the contract says is to prevent. Uh putting people into the system is how do we get together and try and solve um those problems together? Uh, the cornerstone was mentioned. Um I have a team of people with domestic violence that meet on a regular basis. Um, with cornerstone advocates, our prosecution teams, et cetera. And our goal is to come up with with uh solutions that um that touch all the resources that are needed. So I think that's just a part of how we do our business. And you see that within the um SRO work with the school district.
Thank you. And then anybody from the district have a perspective on that? How we're incorporating?
Yeah, Kelsey, I'll jump in here. Um, one of one of one of the comments made earlier, I think Emily, you might have shared it. You're participating in those team meetings, uh the in the the student support team. Meetings, that's an integrated um multi-disciplinary team look. So you have your your counselors, your. SMSs, nurses, psychologists, social workers in our SROs in there, you know, with all that different perspectives on there and and. Integrated approach. And I'll, Emily, you wanna talk a little bit more about that? But it sounds like um it's kind of an embedded service in a sense.
Yeah, so I was just gonna chime in a little bit. You mentioned holistic and we kind of chimed in on our resources that we have, but. I think it's important to really realize that we're not experts on certain topics and the same with counselors and the same with admin and SMSs and that kind of stuff. Um, a student might go to an administrator with a law enforcement question. And if they're not an expert in that, they have us as a resource and they come and collaborate with us. On a regular basis. Almost every single day they're coming and saying, the student is reporting this to me. You know, I can't really help. What do you think? And so we might bring in certain people from the school. But we don't all claim to be experts in everything. And so the holistic approach, I think, is what you mentioned too. And that's the way I more see it is. We have so many resources in the building and it only helps to collaborate with all of those resources and figure out what's best. So it goes both ways. Yes, we have resources, but so does a school and we utilize those way more.
And Kelsey, I I would add, um, you know, I oversee with Dave, the Risk and Emergency Management Advisory Task Force, REMAC. And that group's made up of community members, um principals, teachers, union leaders. And administrators. And over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of conversation and work around. Our resources and the conversion of uh security and safety with mental health, uh social work, psychologists. And what that looks like. And our REMAC committee has been very interested in that. And last year, we brought in our Student Services Team. To give a presentation to the REMAC group on um the work that they do. And it's kind of that, how do they connect and how do they overlap and where are the gaps? And there's a little bit of all of that going on right now. And so as Dave and I are kicking off our REMAC group again this this January. So shortened abbreviated year because of um COVID. Um I've been tasked with overseeing with Dave and and Colin and others, the. COVID Response Team. That literally ate up almost all of our fall trying to maintain it. But as we get back to. Um, business and the work, um we're gonna continue to work on that. And continue to to bring together the groups, which the REMAC group um. Has a lot of um our SOR SRO partners as well and our our sergeants that oversee it are a part of that group. So we can continue to merge and provide greater support in our system when it comes to what you were asking about.
Thanks, Troy. Thanks, everyone. Um I guess my next question is, you know, kind of a comment question. The other thing that happened in June. Is we started getting a whole bunch of emails from our students and community members um as a result of, you know, Minneapolis. Uh pulling out of their SROs uh program, the school district. And I do think part of those um emails, um of course, there was a lot of stuff happening in the community, but also there wasn't um. I would say there was um a lack of probably information of what our school resource officers. Do and what their role is. So this is really helpful to have this conversation. And I guess what I, it's not so much a question, it's just um. And I guess what I, it's not so much a question, it's just, I talked to Superintendent McIntyre about this before. I, I think that there's just going to be a need to continue these conversations. And I understand that each of you, the cities do their own kind of community conversations and do that. But I also think from a school distant, district perspective, we need to continue to, to make sure voices are represented, just like we are tonight. Cause you know, I don't know what happens when you have, there's somebody that has a negative experience and their family with the police. And, and then what does that mean? You know, does that escalate a situation in the school? Does it, you know, I mean, I think that, and I understand that goes a lot with the relationships. But you know, I think that there's also this, probably a gap in, in our school community around, you know, the role of the SROs. And, and, and I feel what I really appreciate about what I'm hearing is it has been evolving and based on kind of current events and, you know, just in what, you know, what our communities are asking for and needing. And so I think that from a school community, I'd like to see that continue this conversation.
Thank you, Director Dawson-Walton. With that, we move on to Director Simons.
Just like to echo everybody's appreciation for all of you joining us on this call tonight to hear all of the different perspectives and insights. So again, I would concur with the comments made by Director Dawson-Walton that this really provides that rich understanding of our program and transparency. And the, I know as a Brooklyn Park resident and seeing what our chief and what our work in our city has been to create transparency, to engage in conversation. I appreciate that, how that develops the trust with the community. So it's, I think, so important to continue that transparency so that our community members understand what the role of SROs are in our schools and how they play many different roles. I thought it was extraordinarily powerful to hear from Michaela when she said that the, it helps her and her fellow students to understand the police are there for us to protect us, not police us. And I think that's really a profound statement on the relationship and the work that's been done for many years. And I think seeing the events of the summer was really challenging because we knew that the great work that had been done and Chief Envoldson, like as you mentioned, we, we were quite far ahead in Brooklyn Park. And I know Maple Grove has done good work as well. And that event, the incident of George Floyd, really cast a shadow over that great work and set us back, even though we knew our SROs, our officers, our work were, they were the same people the day before that event as they were the day after, but the environment completely changed around us. So that, now our work is more difficult and now we have the imperative to work harder at those relationships and to even be more transparent than we've ever been before. So I think this is the, the conversation that we need to continue to have. As we think about returning back from COVID, I know through my observations of the, the work and community work in Brooklyn Park with the police and Maple Grove, that domestic violence has increased, mental health issues has increased. So it's going to be more important than ever for our SROs to be accessible in our buildings, working with our students to be there, because I, I have to imagine that that's going to spill over into our schools when we return and you're going to be possibly hearing from more students. If people are just come back in a little bit different state than when we left and we're going to need all of you even more. So that's really the comments that I have. I don't have any specific questions. Just thank you for the excellent work that you do on behalf of our students. And I've, I've just heard story after story, I have the opportunity to talk to police officers in my community in Brooklyn Park. And I've been able to hear from officers who have been SROs who have discussed when they interact with youth outside of the school setting, how they're able to communicate with other officers on how to de-escalate that student outside, how to intervene and how to ensure that student has support because of those relationships. I, I think that's just so important. So thank you again. Really appreciate this.
Thank you, Director Simons. Next up is Director, Director Misscada Jones.
Hi, thank you. First of all, I just have to say, from a personal perspective, and I can only speak on my own, of my own experience. I had a phenomenal experience with Maple Grove Police 13 years ago now, 14 years ago now with OFPs. And so thank you for the work that you do. And just from personally, how, when I, when I needed someone there to help me through a situation, much like one of our families shared, that you were there. So I just have to share that from a personal perspective. I also want to recognize that we have a lot of students and families that experienced a great amount of trauma on, on May 25th and quite frankly, before that. And since then, and I'm, although we, we as, and I'm a teacher, so I'm just going to tell you as a teacher, I can't be a therapist and I can't be, you know, all the things. And people are asking me to do all the things. They're doing much the same thing with the police now. And so how do we work with the system that we have in making sure that the students that we have, have experienced a lot of trauma just from everything that's gone on in the past seven, eight months between COVID and the racial unrest? So I guess my questions are more like, how can we make sure that the voices that need to be heard are being heard? And so I'm thinking of things like, who's on the REMAC committee? Can we have students on that committee? Can we have, make sure that we have parents that are reflective of the community? And then as far as like, I love the idea of the committee or the meetings that you have, Emily, with, was that at Northview? Is that where you're at? Park Center?
Park Center.
Park Center. I was on the right side of town, but not quite right. So the, at Park Center where you have those collaborative, kind of wraparound services or make sure that we're all fitting together. And so I'm wondering if there might be a committee that kind of can come together with SROs and students and families and say, how can we make this program such that we're not unintentionally causing any, any more harm than our students have had? I'm just thinking from a personal perspective, anyone I see that looks like my ex-husband, I have a very visceral reaction, right? And so if a student sees a uniform, they might have a very visceral reaction or a certain mannerism or those kinds of things. So how can we make sure that we're working together to not trigger our students, which could cause some escalation? And I know you have de-escalation training and I super appreciate that. And I think our teachers probably need some as well. And so that's just kind of where I'm starting. Go big or go home.
Jackie, I can jump in on that one because I know we've had some informal conversations the last few months while we've been wrestling with everything that's demanded our time from COVID. But the idea of putting together a SRO Community Advisory Committee to help us continue to improve on everything you've heard tonight. Because I think Director Dawson-Walton really captured it well with the, hopefully the theme is continuous improvement. How do we continue to just keep doing better as the world's changing so rapidly? And you heard the commitment from, from our partners from both cities really are all in on that. But then how do we pull those voices in from our students, from our staff, our parents, like we kind of did tonight, but you know, in an ongoing fashion, right? So that's one of my goals is to get that kind of a idea off the ground.
Thanks. I'm going to sit and hold for a minute, Cheryl Stoffey, so you can go on to the next person.
Okay, thank you. And you did have a question that Troy or Dave, you may want to answer. How is REMAC put together and what is the constituents of that?
Yeah, I could speak to, to REMAC. As far as, you know, one thing is we always kind of put out feelers for people in the community. I know we work with Barb Olson and Grace Becker to advertise, to, to get community members to be a part of REMAC. That's on the district website. You know, we reach out to schools when we have openings as well, as far as filling, you know, we want to get representation pretty much of all levels of the district. So, you know, from our custodial unit to, to student services, to, to admin, they're a part of that. Jackie, I know you specifically asked about students. We've tried in years past to get students permanently on there. And I think part of the challenge that we've had is when we meet to get students, it, it hasn't worked out. Troy and I were just, we actually just met today to talk about our January meeting, talking about, we actually think it may be easier this year to get the students and on the committee because we'll be meeting just like in this environment here virtually. And I will tell you, last year, we couldn't get permanent students on REMAC. But we had a, one of our meetings dedicated to student voice and we brought in eight or nine students from across all of our high schools. And the feedback that we got from that, from just that meeting alone was phenomenal of just people were just, the, the students input of where they feel safe in our schools, where they don't feel safe. The, you know, it, it was such a great presentation to have, to hear their voice. And, and that was the biggest recommendation is you have to get students on this committee permanently. So we, you know, so they're there at, at all meetings and that is definitely a goal of ours. We, we've been working at it and we feel like this year will be a little bit more successful, just be able to be a little bit easier to attend in the virtual nature.
I was just going to offer too, Dave, I appreciate you giving that scenario. Mike and Jackie, similar to ACMAC, REMAC was born in the same kind of era and time. And so we bring in the right partners and, and we also bring in the right committee groups. We are challenged with the student voice at times. We do callouts, we ask principals, we tap different individuals to do that. It sounds like, from what I hear often, that board members get a lot of emails and communications from families and from students. I would offer that if it comes in related to this, I strongly encourage you to send them my way. I would love to grow that. I'm not asking you to do my job, go get people out there. But if you're getting that feedback or input, direct them our way because we are looking to grow both the voice on the, the REMAC group and then as Corey mentioned, looking at an SRO Community Advisory Committee, having that input. And hopefully tonight too, I know that not everybody logs in and watches school board meetings on Tuesday nights for multiple hours. I know we're all great at it, but they don't. But you guys do hear from the community, especially when events occur. And we'd love to get that funneled our way. So please share it.
Thank you, Troy. Thank you, David. Next up, we'll go to Director Douglas.
Thank you. First, I just want to say that I really appreciate the comments from my fellow colleagues. You've asked some really important questions and you've made some really good comments. I also appreciate, the entire presentation has been really fruitful, I feel like. We've received a lot of information. And like Kelsey said, it, it would have been helpful for us to have this information prior to our decision to, our meeting where we had to make the decision on whether or not we were going to renew our contract or not. But we've, this has been work that's been going on for a really long time and it's really incredible to be able to see and hear testimony from the people involved in the work, how it's been going and what's been happening. I really appreciate Detective Matias's specific information about keeping kids out of the juvenile justice system. We know that the pipeline to prison is a real thing. And it's really important that we do everything that we can to keep our kids out of the juvenile justice, justice system whenever possible. And so I really appreciated hearing specific information about that. And I was wondering if there is any other information that you could share with us about how we keep our kids out of the juvenile justice system and what else we can do on the school district side to support that work?
I can speak more on that subject as well. We work closely with administrators and all of us communicate with each other. Every time we have issues with certain students that we need to try to be able to help them as much as we can. And as the chief also mentions, all the resources that we have, we try to utilize as much as we can to be able to help the students move forward and follow up, especially when we go through diversion. When you know that one of the students is going to a diversion, diversion program, that is so important for them. Each day checking up on them, making sure that they are able to complete that program to be able, for them to be successful. One of the main goals in that we try to do, especially what I have, we have done here in Brooklyn Park with us as a juvenile unit. The knowledge that we get from being at school and getting to know students and getting to know what their issues are at school. It's information that is so valuable that you can't imagine how, can, how helpful it is for us to be able to know them and know their story and know their story and help them. Because in most cases, the cases that we work on, like it was mentioned before, is situations that happen outside of the school that involves our students and being witness of some type of incident and victims of some type of incident on the street or something that happens at home with parents. And for us to be able to have that information and try to provide the support that they need when something happened at home is very important. And that's something that we try to work as much as we can. Obviously, there's cases that we can't really prevent them from going through the juvenile justice system. But it's also the follow-up that even though they have to go to court one day or they have to go respond to a citation. We are there for them to help them with information. Like you, Grant said before, if they need a right to non-miscuit court date, they need, they need to go there. And we also work closely with probation officers. And the probation officers that are, especially with juvenile probation, checking with us and tells us how they're doing. We talk to them and communicate, make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to. The communication between child protection, mental health, domestic violence, all the SROs, probation officer, and, and also the district is there. And for us to be able to work together to try to make them successful and keep them away from the juvenile justice system is, is, in my opinion, one of the most important things.
Thank you. I, I have a lot of questions, but I will just ask this other question because I, I know we've all got lots of questions. I wanted to specifically ask a question of Ms. Kelly Click, Joshua's mom. You had spoken about your son, who's part of the ASD program. And I know that, I also have a child who is autistic. And so I know that there's certain challenges with being a parent and fears of, of what could happen if your child is in a situation that they're unfamiliar. And I also hear from a lot of people that their kids are afraid of anyone in a uniform. Or, you know, we've all seen the viral videos of, of a child with special needs that has not been handled appropriately by an officer. And that's a fear. And I just wanted to know if you would be comfortable with, or if any of our officers would be comfortable sharing, how they specifically handle kids who have special needs and what your experience has been to help Joshua and, and his specific circumstances?
Okay, I'll speak a little bit here. Joshua, the same situation, was of, kind of afraid of police officers through the sensory issues, the sirens and things like that. So that kind of put him off at a young age. So to serve school, I think the teachers and the administration worked with Officer Kathy and Officer Kathy came with a, a different approach with them. Kind of gave more personal opinion with them, trying to work with them individually. And like I said, she was the one that created that sticker chart for him. And so just basically was more of a positive influence for him and be able to get rewards for him. So anybody knows with, with autism, you work on positive reinforcement. So anybody knows with with autism, you work on positive reinforcements. And so she was there physically to see him. She she actually actually has even seen him at playing the adaptive floor hockey at Maple Grove Middle School and they have to play there instead of the high school. So there's still a relationship and a bonding there that he can still see. And he, she basically made that experience for him very positive. And so that is what I appreciated. And so basically, with the officers having a positive reinforcement like that sticker chart and something to work towards that helped out. But also that gave the opportunity for the other kids in the connect program, the ASD program, to see that too. And so with having Joshua be there, the, they were, Joshua was able to give the other kids experience too. So they got to see the police car and stuff like that. So it was just basically a really good group atmosphere for the police officer to work with Josh and to get the whole community together in that ASD program. So that helped a lot.
Thank you for sharing that. I I really appreciate that. I'm I'm wondering if any of our officers could speak to maybe any training that you have in regards to kids with special needs or experiences you've had that would help us and our community members who have those concerns, understand the approach that you take when you're handling a kid who maybe has behavioral or, you know, mental health, special needs?
Before one of our officers speak, I just want to address this issue of training. Maple Grove made the commitment that we trained our entire police department on autism and how to respond. So it's it's layered from the frontline response all the way into the specialty units. And we've done that with various other trainings. So we've been very intentional to understand what the needs of the community are and get that specialized training out to the entire department. And I'll turn it over to one of the officers if they'd like to comment.
Yeah, I'd like to say something about that. Like the chief said, we did go through the autism training. I actually, my wife is a special ed teacher in a in a different district and my mother was a special ed teacher for her whole career. So something very near and dear to my to my heart and very important to my family. And we make intentional efforts in our schools to connect with the lead teachers in our different setting three programs. And also with setting one and two teachers to make sure that we are aware of any special issues. And we're also visiting those classrooms just to hang out. It could be someone's graduating something or had, you know, the adaptive floor hockey team, you know, One State or whatever it may be, and just having cake. And going down and hanging out and spending a lot of time and building those relationships. So that if something does happen or someone has a really bad day, that we already know. We already know the names, we already did all the knuckle bumps every day for the whole school year. And we're able to quickly come in and and support the staff and the family of that student. So we just do a lot of, a lot of just basic day to day stuff of saying hi, visiting in the lunchroom, sitting at a table, maybe talking to them about whatever their day is like. And that kind of stuff really helps further that.
It's kind of like reinforcing what Grant just said. I think one of the most important things here, especially at Northview with our special ed students, is being there when they're having a good day. That's, I think, is one of the most important things that you can do. Because when things are going wrong, that relationship that you build when they're having a good day and focusing on what they'd like to do and what their interests are, are also very important. And I had one experience with one student at the beginning of the year when she missed her boss the first day. And we couldn't reach any of the parents and the only option was for me to take her to, take her home. And the idea for her to ride in a police car was terrifying. And it took a lot of convincing and a lot of talking. And and after we were able to agree to come with me, even the principal offered for her to ride with us, so she felt safer. That gave us a lead to build a relationship to the point that she was making drawings that were hanging on my office and there was no fear anymore. But I believe the most important thing is, like Grant said, being able to be there when they're having a good day, being in their, build those relationships. Being able to know what they like is so important when they point, when they're having a bad day. And once they see you and they know that you're not there to enforce its school rules, but you're there for them, it's like a weight off the shoulders. And most of our SROs or the door and our office are always open, especially for them when they're having a bad day. Because that's, they feel like that's the safe place, especially in my experience, as a safety for them to vent and calm down because they know we're on their side.
Thank you. I'll give my question and let me start with, I think this should go to Superintendent McIntyre. Tell me what, if any, role our SROs have in school-based discipline of our students?
Discipline is only handled by our school administrators. They don't have a role in that. They might consult on an incident and the judgment that goes into making some decisions around the details of an incident. But any school-based discipline can only be really provided through our school administrators, really driven by state statute. Anything that's more of a criminal nature or would require any law enforcement action, that's handled by our, by the police department and not our, our school administrators. So they work in collaboration together to make those decisions.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that people understood that and that was clarified because we've had those questions in the past. With that, I'll go back up to Director Brooks if you have additional two questions.
Thank you. All right, so, all right, just trying to again group some of the questions. So I know a common issue among parents across the district is mental health, particularly, you know, right now while we're in distance. And kids are outside of their normal routines and isolated from their peers or mentors like yourselves, the SROs. And it's expected or assumed that when kids return to school, that those, that mental health hit is still going to be with them. And so I guess I'm wondering, what are you thinking about that now and planning ahead? And how are you sort of integrating the fact that mental health is a concern and and will be an ongoing concern going forward? And to the proactive strategies with kids in schools? As well as any reactionary scenarios that may come up as well? So that could be for, it could be for any of the SROs, either either chiefs or Superintendent McIntyre?
That's Craig here. You know, I I think I heard Director Simmons talk about that, that we're very aware of, not only within the school, but I believe within our communities, that when when COVID is, when we do reach the other side, whatever that may look like. You know, if that, if that ends up requesting or needing additional resources in the school, whether that's school staff or resources that the city can help bring, I think that's something that we certainly will explore. I can tell you, we are planning a lot around both the other side of COVID and issues around the George Floyd trial and some other things. We are really doing a lot of preparation and have been for months. But what I would commit to the district is, you know, if if your staff is simply overwhelmed with issues potentially when the students return in full, that's what we would be here to do is to help you bring the resources of the city to your specific districts to help out in any way that we could.
And I'd just like to jump in, thank you for the question. And I would echo the the increased importance of that student support model and the comprehensive nature of it. We're really going to need the expertise of all of our professionals that provide support. So everyone from our SROs to the clinical therapists, to our counselors, social worker psychologists, nurses, our our SMSs and all those in our system that provide support. And really from a coordinated standpoint, because I think you really identified the reality of as we work our way back into in-person learning, everything that's occurred over the last few months, providing some stability, support and and resources. Because we also have a lot of community resources we're going to need to align with as well, from the county and from other outside providers. Because we really actually don't do everything ourselves. But in in collaboration with with all those things in the community, we we really can coordinate and make a really big difference.
Yeah, Corey, I guess I would just add, sorry, Mike, to jump in, that each Monday, oftentimes principals, they have 18 meetings. And during these meetings, they pretty much are briefed on what's happening in the community. So going back and working with my time with Grant, on Mondays, he would share, what are some of the events that may have transpired over the weekend? Were there any students that were removed from the house for safety reasons? Were there events, parties or something like that that we need to be aware of, that there might be some discourse? So I offer you that only to say that even during this time of distance learning in COVID, there's opportunities for our SROs to maintain contact with our families to understand what what's happening out there so we can begin to ramp up appropriately for when our scholars are back in a brick and mortar experience. What are the services that are needed? What are, we heard Tanya mention, which is absolutely true, there's a higher level of domestic violence that's happening right now. We also know there's some homelessness that's happening at a profound rate right now. So there's all these truths that we know that's out there. And this is a great opportunity to elevate our collaboration because there's some data that we can pull from that we can begin to build out some really meaningful supports for our scholars.
I would just offer another point that I've seen in the past that Thomas might help understand our processes. Park Center was a good example last year where we had a very sensitive situation with the community and with some gang activity within the community. And we were able to pull resources from multiple sites. Steve Fisk from our cabinet team, Dave and I, and the city of Brooklyn Park and the city administration and the police department came together for that site to provide all the additional supports. And I would envision with our kids coming back, that we may have spikes at different schools for different reasons. And I've seen it in action and in our team, we're very collaborative with our community partners. We find other resources outside of our normal avenues of resources and we bring them in and we target focus the challenges in those areas. Now, this could be multiple sites, obviously, as big as this could be coming back. But I am confident that we have a really good team of people that we can pull and help provide supports. And our student services team is phenomenal as well, working with Cade and Jill to bring in our counseling teams to specific sites. And we've seen that in action and I think that'll be one of the resources that we will have to use as we move forward.
Thank you. That was, that was helpful. And I, my next question is also sort of along the same lines of something that you already touched on, but just for kind of public transparency and getting some more information. I was actually curious about the required training that SROs go go through. And that was something that was touched on in the presentation. But yeah, just wanting to know sort of what is sort of the the training that's required upon hire as well as any recurring training that would be above and beyond what's already mandated by the post board?
I can speak briefly and maybe have the chiefs or one of the SROs chime in. Eric, I don't know if you want to tackle from here what that looks like and I can speak a little bit about it from our contract.
Well, let me just talk about a couple of things when it gets parsed, when you, when you take a look at what the training requires. So you mentioned the post board and there's a simple or or a small number that gets put out there that I think it's misconstrued. So an officer is required to obtain 48 hours of training during their licensing period, which is every three years. And that seems like that's not a lot of training. So those are very basic numbers that you're being provided with. An officer at minimum in the state of Minnesota needs to have a two-year degree to become an officer. And then within that two-year degree, they have to attend what's called their post board skills program. And if you were to take a look at my statement on the website for George Floyd, I actually have a link to the requirements of that program and are very well spelled out. And it and it's not just police skills, that's one component of it. There's very diverse skills that I think apply very well to policing, but also integrate into an SRO assignment. Then when an officer gets hired, they get put on the street and they have 16 weeks of training with an experienced, with an experienced officer. So be before they even get into the squad car all by themselves, at minimum, two years, plus probably another 10 weeks, plus 16 weeks of intensive training. And all of that training on the street takes place after a comprehensive selection process. So we're psychologicals, backgrounds, all of those things. And I think it's important for us to remember that. And I and I think the chief could concur with this, our standards are very high in our two cities. So we select very competent people and high quality people. And then there's, there's the philosophy of what is in the organization and what we train. So we've talked about many different things tonight, so mental health. Our agency trains each officer in the 40-hour crisis inter, or crisis intervention training. So that is concepts plus it's scenario based, which which also ties into de-escalation. And then we probably spend about 80 hours a year per officer on training. So I mentioned 48 hours, every three years, we're about 80 hours, so about two hours per week. And that there's, there's use of force, there's policies, there's all these things. Plus, we also very specifically target issues. So like this year, we spent time on on autism. That was one of our main issues. Prior to that, it's fair and impartial policing, so we learn about implicit bias. We we've had cultural diversity experts from Mayo come up and speak. So we're very specific on what our staff gets trained on. Then, as the, it's been mentioned before, the school district works with the police department when they select who the right fit is for that particular school to sit in that, into that, sit in that chair and take on that responsibility. And then they go to some advanced training after that. And then I can turn it over to one of the SROs to speak about the NASRO training and things like that.
I'll talk about the NASRO training then. It's got, it's kind of evolved over the years. There's used to be three-day and five-day training, so it kind of varies on the course that you take through NASRO. But the beginner's course, I literally showed up day one and they said, you're going to be doing a presentation and you're in charge of filling up the time. And I didn't really deal with public speaking before that. And that's kind of their goal is to reiterate to the officers that, yes, you may be a police officer, but you're also going to end up being a teacher. And you're also going to end up being a counselor. And so they have their model that they really stress is that, yes, you will deal with some crimes. Here's your rights, here's the students' rights, here's the school district and the school administrators and what they can do. And they do stress that there is a strong difference with our role compared to an administrator. Because an average patrol officer really doesn't understand coming into the buildings and understanding their role. So that is a very intense, different, different shift from patrol services. Like Chief Enbalson says, is, yes, we're going to restore peace and we're going to leave. But at the school, you definitely have time and you definitely have resources to handle the situations. And it is reducing the trauma that was talked about earlier. It's reducing the trauma inflicted on the the children in the school. I myself have taken some of the SEP TED, the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design courses. I've done the Advanced NASRO course. So there's many different training opportunities for the SROs through different facets, different conferences, different topics, so.
I certainly appreciate that and that actually goes above and beyond the training that I have come to learn about through, you know, work with HRC and the Brooklyn Park Police as well. So I I appreciate that explanation from both of you. And I think the one that I was looking for and that that was sort of missing, but also kind of mentioned, was the the training on cultural sensitivity. And particularly geared toward our populations here within Brooklyn Park, Brooklyn Center and Maple Grove. And so I don't, I don't know if you're doing anything currently right now that is specifically targeted toward those cultures or those groups of students within our schools. But But I I know that some of those needs can be unique as well, particularly as it relates to relationships with law enforcement.
I will, I'll offer, Thomas, as we talk about some of the enhancements in our agreement. And one of them was, is what what type of training can we provide our SROs? You've heard all night about our relationship, and they're part of the administrative team. And we've spent some considerable amount of time over the last couple of years working with Pacific Education Group, and then transitioning to our own internal programs with their EFT training. And those are programs that are a part of the new agreement that talk about, or that will be provided to our SROs, as they are all of our administrative and our teaching staff and our ESPs. So we will be embedding and unfolding that into the programming as we move forward. So they have it, and some of the officers have already participated in our programming. And I saw Grant just shut off his mic, so that means he's got something to say. I'll turn it over to him once to share some of his background in that.
Yeah, thank you, Troy. We, in Maple Grove, we've done an eight-hour training on cultural sensitivity with the police department, all officers. In addition to that, I have gone to the Beyond Diversity Training, which I know that the district is not currently using. But that was a two-day class that we went to. That was, at that time, was managed by the district's equity team. Becca and Isaiah were running it. It was very, very, very nice training. It was a lot of school staff that was there. I think we went and met in one of the two-eighty-seven buildings, but it was very, very helpful. In addition to that, I've joined the the equity team here at Oseo, and am going to those meetings. So there's a lot of different opportunities for that, and obviously, there's a lot of need in law enforcement to be listening to a lot of different voices and perspectives, and making sure that we are not turning a blind eye or ignoring what's going on. But we're we're definitely pressing into the community and pressing into those voices and those perspectives.
Troy, if I can also add, I just want to say that I know both of our communities are very involved in the community forum on race. And our agency has made a commitment to having its command staff and its leadership team go through that experience. And it's been good information, but also being at the table and having the conversations and learning from people that we're trying to reach out to has been a tremendous asset to our learning beyond just classroom learning. So we appreciate the district bringing us into that into that work.
Thank you.
I will, so I'll go ahead and leave it there. Again, I appreciate the thorough responses to my questions. And again, just want to say that I appreciate all of the work that you do, both in the police departments and the SROs in our schools. I, you know, I think we all were able to hear today through the presentation and the questions that your jobs are incredibly complex. And like our educators, you are asked to do a lot. And so I I hope that we can continue these conversations going forward. I look forward to that report that is coming out that addresses some of the continuous improvement efforts. Because as you said previously, there are always ways that we can improve. But other than that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to some of our other school board members, assuming that some of those questions will overlap with ones I had on my list. But thank you again.
All right, thank you, Director Brooks. That leads us to Director Dawson Walton. Do you have a question or two?
Um, just actually for Assistant Superintendent Lee Han, how will, how with the new position around family engagement that you oversee, how will they work together with the SROs? Or do they already, are they already working together?
Yeah, so I would offer that some of the information that was shared tonight was new learning for me as well. Just thinking about some of the community engagement efforts that are happening within the police departments. I think that is a really unique opportunity to really bridge some of those experiences. It gives us a more comprehensive look as to what is the lived experience and what's the reality of our families and our scholars here in Oseo area schools. So that's, I would say, first order of business. As I was listening, I made a note to reach out to Vanessa, as, and I'll get with the chiefs as well, to make sure I know the names of those individuals, so we can start engaging those conversations.
Thank you. And, you know, my last kind of, I mean, I I think that this, like I said before, I think, you know, we need to continue always these conversations. I think they're so helpful. And and you, as a board member, you know, our students are at our core. And so what is the role of, if there was ever an issue within SRO where there was, you know, somebody was feeling they weren't being heard or treated unfairly, is it then that a student would go or a family member would go to the principal? Is that how it would work?
I see, I see Kelly shaking her head pretty aggressively. I'm not a principal, so I can't speak to that, but I think that's the avenue I've seen in the past.
That's exactly what would happen, Kelsey. They would report that to an administrator at the school, and it would definitely get to the principal, and then it would be handled at that level in collaboration with the police department.
Absolutely. And that's, and then one thing for Maple Grove, so Sandberg now, who I actually worked with at Oseo Middle School, sorry, Sandberg, stuck with me too, and whatnot, I think I've worked with half of the Maple Grove folks over here. Anyhow, the, now I was sat in the front seat, let's be clear. The, the, anytime, I know that because Sandberg oversees the SROs, he would come out to the buildings and do meetings with the principals. I have to imagine that's a practice in Brooklyn Park as well. So there's an investment in the relationship between the administrators and the supervisor of the SROs. And then obviously, Chief Warner and I engaged in multiple conversations over the course of the year as well. He'd send me emails periodically just to check in, see how things are going, and make sure that the commitment and his promise to make sure that there's a strong collaboration is held true.
Thank you. Well, you know, that's the end of kind of my questions. I just want to thank you. I know this gets to be a really long evening for you as officers. And so I, and thank you so much for spending the time and just kind of walking through it with us. And I really look forward to establishing stronger relationships in the future. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. Director Tanya Simons, you have any questions, follow-up, one or two?
One final question for the students and parents on the call. So for Michaela, Josh, Caitlin, or Megan, it was really great to hear your personal experiences. And I think the survey data about the positive response across multiple demographics was also very encouraging to really understand how our students are feeling about our program and our SROs. My question would be, do you, do you feel that the experience that you've shared with us are reflective of your peers and other students in your schools? Do they, would you say that your friends and those in your circles would would echo kind of your experiences that you shared tonight?
Okay, I can start personally.
I would say absolutely yes. My friends and the people that I know at school, the people that I talk to, the people I'm even just slightly related to. Everyone I know has really positive relationships with all of the adults at our school. And everyone really appreciates our resource officers. Most of the people that I talk to have actually, like, been part of some of the, like, the Lunch with liaison program. Some of those people I met through there. And are, like, my friends and the people that I talk to, and, like, literally everyone really, really appreciates our officers, see them as good people that you can go to and talk to about problems that you have at school or outside of school. I definitely believe that the positive experiences are echoed throughout the school. Would anyone else like to say something?
Michaela?
Uh, yeah, so I was just going to say that I definitely can tell the difference between when I talk about law enforcement and police officers in school and with family, friends, and with other people that I know in school and school friends. It's definitely a different conversation than what I would have with people that have not had those interactions with our school officers. And that just goes to say that they they feel more comfortable with police officers in our school and with the police officers that are at our school. And I think it would definitely be echoed the same around my entire friend group and just our school in general, because not only do I see myself interacting with the officers, but there's often times where there's multiple students in the office in the morning, saying good morning to the officers, and at lunchtime saying, you know, talking to the officers about their day, or having interactions with the officers. And there's oftentimes even that people know that I have that great connection with the officers, and will come to me and personally ask me, you know, how do you talk to the officers? Well, how did they make you feel? And the students ask me my perspective personally, so that they can then be connected to the officers, or coming to me and asking me, you know, do you think that I can trust the officers with this personal information or anything like that? And so I do strongly believe that it is echoed throughout the school and throughout the community as well, and that the school resource officers do have a positive impact in our entire community.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Tanya? Follow-up question?
No, I don't have any more questions. Thank you, everybody, for hanging out with us for over two hours, to our students and families. As we ask many questions, we're a pretty detailed-oriented group. And I hope I hope you see that we care, all of the board members care deeply about really understanding the program and the work that's being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Simons. Director Muscata Jones, do you have a question or two?
Yeah, I have a few more questions I've, I'll ask, too. I want to ask the students and parents if they want to answer. I've got two questions for you. The first is, what would you say is the best part about the SRO program real quickly? And then if there was one thing that you could do to make it even better, what would you do?
Want to start with Michaela?
Okay, so I would say the best part about our SRO program is that they are there throughout the entire day and throughout the entire school year, whether it be during our spring breaks, or our, our school dances, our football games, our school activities, after-school activities throughout the day. They they come in when we come in, and then they leave when we leave. And so it's nice to have them there throughout the entire day. And then also even that connection that we have to where we can contact them outside of school or contact them if we know that we need something or need a personal help or help with any type of legal matter of some of any sort. And then one thing that I say that I would think would, one, either enhance the program or just something that could be implemented to make it better, is this outreach program built in through the school program to where, like, kind of how we do the officers going to classes, certain classes, just more of that and more of them interacting with students themselves, instead of the students going to them for interaction. So whether it be, you know, an after-school program that the police officers personally hold or something like that, to where they kind of are put in, really put into the community and really kind of like made that shape for them and that presence in the school and the community.
Perfect.
Thank you, Michaela. Caitlin?
Yes, I would like to say that I one hundred percent agree with Michaela. For the most part, I I I would say that the best thing is how you have, at our school currently, we have one officer that you can rely on to always be there, who can, you can go to, and the consistency of always knowing that you have that familiar face, and you see them around the school. It's a really great thing. And the students can trust that one person, and I think it's a really great thing. But the one thing that could be better is making sure, just like Michaela said, that students are encouraged to build that relationship and that the police officers can reach out to the students a little bit more. I know personally that not many students would know about some of the programs that they can do to connect with the police officers. They know about them, and they really appreciate them, but they might not know about the specific things that they can do to connect with them. And I think it would be really important for the police officers to be able to reach out to students and for the students to know about the things that they can do to connect with the officers and build those relationships even bigger and better all around the school. Instead of just having, like, little pockets of students that can spread it to their friends, we should try and find a way that all of the students can know about the ways that they can connect with the officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Mrs. Click, or you still on?
Yes, yes, I am. I think the positive things that we said is, obviously, the positive reinforcements. I know with the kids, with the ASD and autism here, need to have the positive reinforcements. So the one thing I would recommend would probably be able to have the officers be available and come into the connect rooms and be able to be visual on a more frequent basis, so that the kids see them in a positive node, that they're not always there if, once incidents happen and things like that happen. So it's better to be proactive and have them show up there. And so they get to, they get to be, so they have a relationship with the officers on a good side. Like Officer Mateo said, is be there before the incidents happen, so they have that relationship. That's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't believe our fourth family is still on. What's that?
I think they left.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah. So back to, back to you, Jackie.
So my next question is kind of partly for students' families, but also for administrators. I am unaware, do we have peer mediator programs? And if we do, are SROs involved with those peer mediator programs? And the reason I ask is, I've been looking into the research, and having the peer mediation seems to help mitigate a lot of, a lot of the negative experiences that students have with SROs. Kelly, you want to take that, or?
Sure, Jackie, I'll take it. Waiting to see if anybody else is going to jump on. But right now, we're really, Jackie, the peer mediation has really been replaced, for all intents and purposes, with our restorative circles and our work with mediation services. And certainly, it's a great idea to have our school resource officers involved in that. And if the circumstances warrant, you know, involve them, if it was a police issue or a issue that caused fear in the school community. And I think that's a great way for them to be involved, just like they are with the leadership teams and in other ways. It's another great way for the students to see them as a real integral part of the school community. So I love that idea. I'll definitely share that with the secondary lead principals and we.
I I appreciate that, because the other piece of that question that I had right underneath was the restorative justice piece and what, you know, what the trainings are and how we might look at it. I I just want to make sure that we're, and I'm not going to ask another question, because I've asked my two, but that we're, that we're making sure that we're working from a strength base rather than more of a harm reduction or a strength base. more of a harm reduction or a um strength-based preventative style rather than um a punitive uh way of looking at things. So which I'm hearing loud and clear um tonight, so I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Director Muscata Jones. Uh, Director Douglas?
Thank you. Um, you know, I know we've spent quite a bit of time talking about, you know, mental health and and we've I think all acknowledge that we expect that there's gonna be some challenges when we come back to school um in person. And I'm just wondering, um, you know, Michael, Lee Han, you you made some comments about things that we could do to prepare for that. And I'm wondering if there are, if there's a way that we can start gathering data on the students who are going, we already know are going to need additional supports and what we can do to start supporting them right now um and in preparation of returning back to school in person.
So now I'd actually probably pass that over to Kelly or Steve just because they work more closely with uh some of the buildings. But um, yes, I mean, the 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 SAT team meetings or the eighteen meetings that we have on Monday mornings, that's often when we'll discuss uh how our scholars are doing, what their experiences are. I know our counselors and our social workers continue to be uh tremendously engaged with our families. I know that some schools are even doing home visits uh tomorrow uh for instance. So I know that there's a lot of things that are happening. Uh, the specifics maybe Kelly or Steve might have, but uh.
Yeah, just jumping briefly, um, you know, from the elementary standpoint, um, this is happening in many of our buildings where uh principals along with their teams have pulled together, you know, available staff to to already identify and support students. As uh Michael mentioned, some of it may be home visits, uh, a little of that, but more just that kind of that one-on-one connection and building those relationships. So unfortunately, you know, students uh, you know, have uh been identified uh varying, you know, for for varying reasons uh who need support. And so uh administrators with their teams are reaching out and and trying to make those basic connections and determine what next they need to uh to do in terms of connecting them potentially for other services.
Kelly, did you want to add to that or is that pretty much covered?
I think, uh, Heather, you know, I know at the high schools and the secondary buildings for sure, they're keeping a close eye on on students who are absent for more than a few days and then reaching out to them personally to make those connections and see what um, you know, how they can support them and if there's something that they need. And also, um, you know, mid-tris, when those came out a few weeks ago, I know the schools looked at students that were receiving a grade below a C and then they had a purposeful plan to um uh connect with all of those students again, using all of our resources from our SMSs, our student management specialists, to the counselors, to our social workers, to all hands on deck. And and um, so they're really being intentional about not letting students slip through some cracks. I um was able to garner a whole lot of some really interesting and unique things that our secondary schools are doing and I I know that Cory is gonna be sharing that with you. So I think you'll see a lot of really good things in there, Heather.
Thank you. Um, I I think that that's really helpful. Um, I also am wondering more specifically about our students who might be facing threat of violence at home or threat of losing their home, um, things where our resource officers would normally be maybe a little bit more involved and how can we can make sure that those students who are having those types of things happening at home be connected with officers so that they feel like they have someone else that's safe. Um, and sometimes maybe that might be able to actually take action if they're in a in a dangerous situation.
I agree, Heather, and and I uh made a note to myself already. I'm meeting with the secondary principals on Friday again. I connect with them once a week and um you and Jackie both reminded me of some really good things that I want to connect with them about, especially in keeping those relationships and lines of communication open with our SROs all the time, even in distance learning, more importantly, even in some respects than others, so.
I would just offer to, as a reminder, maybe you're not aware, but our SROs are still on duty serving our schools on the secondary level. So they're either a phone call or an office door away at our site. So they are there and available. And I know they've been working on some of that stuff, Heather. It trickles into their office through the administrators and they do welfare and health checks. Um, they will reach out to families directly and or even go do a house visit if they need to. And that was something that was intentional with uh both chiefs when we talked about what our plan would look like opening the school year, going from hybrid and in-person to distance learning. So we have that flexibility to continue those supports.
Also, I would like to add to that as well. Uh, us as officers, we receive notification every time uh a student uh from our schools uh are involved in any type of incident, either as a witness, as a victim, as a suspect, or even mentioned in any way. And uh, most of us take that prior approach to review those reports to make sure that uh there isn't something that we need to take action on. And if uh uh those uh incidents need further investigation, we usually get assigned those cases as well. So if uh, uh, one of our students is going either from uh suffering from child abuse or domestic violence, something's going on, or even is a runaway case. Um, most of the time it gets assigned to us because we're familiar with them. Uh, so we know uh right now, uh, and we keep track of who are are the ones that are struggling, even at these times we're not, we're not seeing in person. Uh, so we can actually focus on them uh closely once we come back to more of a normal uh school setting.
Really helpful information. Thank you for sharing that. Um, I had another question or like a add, like a point of clarification, but I forgot what it was. Um, but thank you guys so much. I really appreciate the the information and the emphasis on supporting our kids. Even when we can't physically be with them all the time, I know that it's really critical um for for a lot of our kids. Oh, I remember what it was. Um, I I would assume that this is already the case, but if a teacher is seeing something maybe in a a Google meets or um hearing from a student maybe through a messaging and they're not a student that's already on the radar, the teachers can forward that information on to our resource officers. You know, they don't have to necessarily go through other channels or sit on it, right?
I think, Heather, they also would typically reach out to the admin, their administrator as well for guidance or support in those types of situations. Even if it's just a matter of just to kind of talk through, you know, what they may have seen or what observed and certainly, but would uh you know, definitely as a mandated reporter or something along that line. So hopefully, uh, we're definitely follow those protocols.
I know, uh, in my ten years, Heather, at at Park Center, for example, you know, the students had such good relationships with the school resource officers and at at Brooklyn Junior at that time as well, like Craig said a long time ago, Chief Emboldson. And um, so you know, the good news really around that was going full circle to where we started about another trusting adult in the building. And so uh, that was part of that collaborative work that we did. They oftentimes would see a school resource officer first in the lunchroom for breakfast duty or something and go report it to him or her. And then they would let us know, you know, so it could have even happened the reverse way. And um, you know, I I I worked with the school resource officers in Brooklyn Park. I'm sure it's the same in Maple Grove. But for eighteen years as a lead principal in Brooklyn Park, between Brooklyn Junior and then Park Center and uh, I I'm telling you, they were phenomenal. It it, they were phenomenal. They were huge collaborative support for the work that we were doing uh to meet the needs of our students and didn't hesitate to be of assistance in any way, shape or form. Uh, you know, with our homeless students, with our students of domestic violence, whatever it might have been. So yeah, the partnership was very important.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Douglas. I want to thank all of our directors for all the questions tonight and and everyone who's answered them. Uh, I wanted to give a final uh you know, uh, ability for anybody to ask the final question if there's any that need to be asked tonight. Or I'm sure everybody will be available to answer questions on the side. I know we we do have very good relationships. So uh with that, does any director have a a final uh, a final question? Okay.
I do, I do. Sorry, um, this is Director Muscata Jones. Um, so just two thoughts real quickly. Um, I'm hoping, Troy, that we can look into the two eighty-seven model and what can we use from that? Um, and Michael, I'm hoping that um uh, we can talk later about how Midwest Plains Equity Assistance Center and that work is um is being integrated. But what I'd really like um for the community um who have been talking to me um quite a bit about why do we have police officers in our school? And um if we can just have a couple of, this is what a police officer in the school can do that a therapist or a counselor or a um, just to help us understand it. I understand that you have great relationships. I'm not um saying that you don't belong there or you do belong there. I um, I think some of our community needs to hear that from you if you'd be willing to share that.
Jackie, I could just speak quickly to your comment about two eighty-seven. Um, in our one-year pause, I did spend a couple hours with um Superintendent Lewandowski and had a conversation, reviewed her materials and her program. And that was some of the consideration put into our review of the contract. So I have had that opportunity, opportunity. I'd be happy to do that aside about that as well if you're interested.
Sure, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And uh, Chief Warner and Chief Emboldson, uh, thank you. Thank you both for for being here tonight and and thank your SRO team. I appreciate that. Do either of you uh want to make a final comment or statement or uh regarding the the program and our relationship?
I would, uh, Chair, I would just say again, thank you for having us here. Uh, we needed to have this conversation. We were deliberate in waiting that we felt shortly after the death of George Floyd, people needed time. And they needed time to grieve, they needed time to heal, and they really did not want to hear from the police. And we acknowledged and understood that. So it was it was about a matter of timing. The other thing I I would just ask of the board is I I think I can speak for Eric as well is in this social media age, COVID age, if something is coming up that you're hearing from your your constituents, um, please share that with Cory or my electeds or call me directly because what what we're experiencing is if the if that instant information isn't out there, it will get filled in with something. So please, if you're hearing something, just let us know so we can hopefully get good, bad, or otherwise, right? We need to get the facts out there. So that's just your request and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Chief Warner?
Well, a- as Craig said, he's always really good uh speaking for me. So I'll just add a few comments. No, I I just want to say thank you for uh the patience in us having this conversation. And I think Craig did say it very well is um, it was a very delicate um uh decision on when to have this because there were so many things that we had to be sensitive to and and respectful of. Um, I will say that I'm very uh just glad that we were able to have it and spend this and I I'm just very optimistic that we're gonna have more of this so we can continue to build on what we have. So thank you, everybody, for your nearly three hours of time and and uh inviting our staff here.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief. Superintendent McIntyre, uh, do you want to follow up with anything? If not, uh, we we can take a five-minute. We'll let everybody go, take a five-minute break, recess, and then come back and and finish up, but uh.
Just want to say thank you. It's a hard act to follow. So thank you very much um to the partnership and and the continued willingness to get better.
And I want to just thank again our our families that showed up tonight and to be fully transparent, I did tell them the board would ask questions. I just did not lead on on how long that would take. Uh, but uh, just in full disclosure, they're really good and they're very detailed and and we do appreciate the time you took out of your evening to do that. I think it's important to hear the voices of our community or students. And again, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, you seconded that. Thank you very much. With that, uh, let's go into a five-minute recess, a four-minute. Let's come back at nine o'clock. And uh, thanks, everybody. All right, we'll be coming back in one minute. And welcome back, everybody. Uh, next on the agenda was our uh discussion around uh what we're doing from our legislative agenda and legislative platform. So let's start that off with uh Ron Meyer.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Ostopi, Superintendent McIntyre, school board members and cabinet members. Um, as you know, we uh have partnered with Ewald Consulting for a number of years to assist us in advancing the interest of the district at the state and legislative level. And so uh, we have a a few different things that we want to discuss uh this evening as it relates to our preparation for the next legislative session that will start um in January, including our legislative platform. Uh, but before we uh get into the platform discussion, I do uh want to just introduce Valerie Baslin from uh Ewald Consulting, who's here with us. And I want to thank her for her patience and uh and being with us through our first agenda item um to uh to be with us this evening to talk about our legislative uh agenda. She's gonna give us a little bit of what we can expect uh from her vantage point for the upcoming. for the upcoming session. And then we'll get into a little bit in terms of our strategy um as we look to partner with our legislators and uh and again further our interest. So with that, I will uh turn it over to Valerie.
Great. Uh, thank you, Ron, and thank you, Mr. Chair and School Board members and Superintendent McIntyre. It's nice to be here tonight. Um, I'm just gonna start by giving a very brief overview as a reminder of the work that I do with Oseo. And I, first of all, just want to thank the School Board and the district for the opportunity to work with you. I I looked um at my records and I have been working with the school district for thirteen years now. Um, so I do appreciate just the longevity, but also the various issues that I get to help the district advocate on. And I will just add, tonight's conversation was very interesting, so I'm glad I could be part of that. You know, in my work as the lobbyist with the Oseo School District, I kind of fill a lot of different buckets. I help the district develop its legislative platform and legislative priorities, and then I help take those legislative platform and priorities to the Capitol. I um work with the district to help form and strengthen the legislative relationships with the delegation. And that changes every two years, often with the election cycle. So that's on and relationship building is something that is ongoing. It's not just a one and done um activity. So I do that in a number of different ways. I help the superintendent um uh determine when's the best time for the superintendent to uh reach out, whether it's communicating about a specific legislative proposal that's before the legislature or just thanking them for their time um in service at the end of the legislative session or helping uh Ron Meyer develop the legislative coffee and um other legislative meetings. And then I just keep the board and the district up to date on what is happening at the legislature. What are all the big issues that is facing the legislature? And what's gone on throughout the week on the education-related committees, especially as it relates to the issues the district cares about? And then lastly, just I seek opportunities to help the district um advance and advocate its legislative priorities through public testimony in the legislative committee process. Um, I won't spend a little bit of time, but if members have questions, I'm happy to talk about some of the outcomes. But I think we've had some great outcomes for the district and kind of having the district's voice elevated at the legislature and especially in strengthening their legislative relationships with their delegation members. I'm going to start and give a recap or a talk about the next legislative session, but I'll backtrack a little bit and talk about the election. Um, the election this year that both the House and Senate were up for reelection. And while I think a lot of people were anticipating the outcomes and hoping there would be changes in both bodies, really, things are staying relatively the same. The Senate Republicans will maintain the majority in the Senate and House Democrats will maintain the majority in the House, although there were some shuffling of the seats. Um, most notably about the election results are two things. One is Minnesota continues to be the only state with divided government. We have a divided legislature. And then uh the election results, while we had seen this happening over the years, I think this last election just solidified the perception that there really is a geographic split between um who's in who uh what which seats are held by which party. So Greater Minnesota is predominantly held by members from the Republican Party with some exception. And then uh vice versa, in the metro and urban area, more seats are held by the Democrats with some exception. But just the divide is is pretty, we became pretty clear this last election. So heading into the next legislative session, which begins January fifth, the first thing the caucuses had to do in both the House and Senate was reorganize themselves and reorganize their committee structures. They elected their leadership. Nothing has changed. Senator Paul Paul Gazelka will be the Majority Leader in the Senate and Representative Melissa Hortman will be the uh Speaker of the House. They also reestablished their committee structures. And while there were no changes to the committee structures, there were some shuffling of the deck chairs in the Senate. Senator Carla Nelson is moving on to chair a the tax committee and Senator Roger Chamberlain will chair the Senate E twelve Finance and Policy Committee. And on the House, um Representative Jim Dabney continues to be the Chair of the Ed Finance Committee. And Representative Dave Pinto will continue to chair the Early Childhood Committee, but we have a new Chair of the Ed Policy Committee, and that's Representative Ruth Richardson. One thing I might add about the House committees, um, the the legislature is growing increasingly diverse. And there is a caucus in the legislature in the Minnesota House called the People of Color and Indigenous Caucus. And a lot of the members from that caucus have been appointed committee chairs. So the the House especially is becoming much more diverse and the leadership in the in the House is becoming much my more diverse. And I think that's reflected in the committee appointments that the Speaker made this last um two weeks ago. Uh, looking to the the beginning of this this two-year legislative cycle is the year that the legislature must adopt and pass a two-year state budget. Um, if we do not pass a state budget by the end of June, we go into a government shutdown. And so most of the attention of the legislature will be focused on that. I think operating in a time of COVID is going to make this much more difficult. Um, they are remote, just as many as we are in all of our other environments. So for the time being, at least in the beginning of session, they will be doing all of their committee work in floor sessions remotely. But they will be working on the budget and we just received the, excuse me, it's late in the evening. Um, the the document or the kind of the tool that the legislature and the governor will use to begin crafting its two-year state budget is the November forecast that was just released last week. Now, we had all fall, spring and summer had been anticipating very significant budget deficits mainly because of COVID. Um, and we got some very good news last week. We were expecting a two point four billion dollar budget deficit for the current year we're in, and that has turned into a six hundred and forty one million dollar surplus. And then for the next biennium, which is the next two-year period, the legislature will be um the legislature legislature and the governor have to adopt a two-year state budget for. That budget deficit went from four point seven billion to one point three billion. And that still is a very significant chunk of money and their task will be very difficult, but it was some very promising news. Now, how the legislature decides to deal with the budget deficit is could be greatly impacted by the outcome of federal negotiations on a COVID relief bill. So depending on the size of a COVID relief bill and if the states are allowed to use to fill some of their budget gaps, um, that their work could be made a little easier, but that remains to be seen. And then the Minnesota Management Budget always has cautions that this could change considerably depending on the trajectory of COVID and and what might happens. Now, this budget forecast does include two things. One, it includes the four-week shutdown that the governor has mandated to bars and restaurants and the economic impact that that will have on businesses and individuals who are not working. And it also factors in um the reduction in pupil loss. The budget forecast always factors in some reduction in but pupil counts, but they factored in an additional about eight thousand um pupil loss due to COVID. Uh, so hopefully, when we get the February forecast, that won't change the outlook as much. Looking to the such other K twelve related and early childhood related issues that we expect to come up. Um, all of the different education organizations are talking about the uh funding lost due to declining pupil aid because of COVID. Um, we're also uh watching School Readiness Plus, which is was one-time funding for school read a four-year-old program. That money is set to expire. And then a few other issues that um teachers of color. Um, there's a legislation to advance funding and policy priorities to increase the teacher of color. And that groups are working very hard to try to advance again this next session. And then the governor directed the commissioner to form a task force or working group on school finance recommendations. And they completed their work and submitted their recommendations to the commissioner to send to the governor. And it's a complete restructuring of school finance and it's has a significant price tag. And while I don't think anything will advance this next session because of the budget deficit, it might get some attention. And then lastly, there was, there's a a push by Neil Kashkari of the Federal Reserve and former Justice Alan Page to change the language on the uh Constitution regarding a right to a public education. And that is something else we think will be hearing. I'm not sure if it will advance or not. It they pushed it last year, but then COVID happened. And so it didn't get a lot of traction, but it's um coming likely to come up again this next legislative session. That is a lot, and I know you're late. I know you're tired, so um I'm certainly available for any questions.
Oh, Mike, you're muted.
Thank you very much, Valerie. Uh, and with that, let's uh start with a round of questions. Let's just start with one question because as you noted, it is late. And let's go backwards from the way we had done it. So Director Douglas, do you have a question for Ms. Dosselin?
I do. Thank you. Um, thank you, Valerie, for your um men's service to the district and support in getting um initiatives brought forward and and helping us uh help us form um our legislative platform, you know, help us make those decisions um or inform us in making those decisions. Anyways, um, my question for you is if you could just expand a little bit more on what the last comment that you made about um the language changes um to uh rights to free education or that whole issue there. Can you expand on that?
I can. Unfortunately, I don't have the actual language right in front of me, but so right now the Constitution talks about uh appropriate. Um, uh, if if you would just bear with me for a second, I can, yeah, free and appropriate. I can pull up the language, but um and the the supporters of this constitutional amendment amendment change want to focus more on the outputs rather than the inputs. And I I could look up the language of the Constitution. I didn't grab that document which I have with me for tonight, so I apologize. More about equity and access to an adequate or high-quality education rather than uh free and appropriate.
Okay. Do you think that you would possibly be able to um like forward us that information in email forms to just so we have a chance to review it and understand what it means?
Absolutely. They have the one pager.
Okay.
Yeah, there's there's a position paper by AMSD on this topic too. I can share that with the board.
That would be great. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Director Moscata Jones, you have a question?
I do. Thank you. Um, Valerie, could you um tell me the School Readiness Plus is about to expire, but what about uh VPK?
VPK was permanent. Um, School Readiness Plus was
Okay.
an agreement that the then legislature and Governor Dayton reached. They had been at an impasse for some time about what to do about um that funding and they reached an agreement to temporarily um institute it for two years. The it was, we just got another, no, it's set to expire this June. So those school districts that receive School Readiness Plus funding could lose it if the legislature and the governor don't agree to extend it. So it's on top, it's 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 almost the same as voluntary pre-K.
No, I, yeah, I I I knew I knew about it. I'm remembering because I teach VPK. I'm remembering that it used to be a three-year turnaround. And so I had just forgotten that it's permanent. Oh. Yeah. So, yeah. That's my one question for now.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Director Simons.
Um, so this is a broader question for Cory and just kind of a for purposes of transparency. When the when our district testifies or takes a position on um a legislative platform item or legislation, um, and we go in and we may testify, what's our process um for sort of, I guess, like approving um the fact that we're gonna take a position on that? And and I think typically it's pretty um routine operational items um and how it affects our district and our district staff may participate, but I just for purposes of transparency, I wanted to kind of have that out there.
So can you clarify for me, Tony? You mean you mean me or the um like maybe members of Cabinet?
Yes. Yeah. So and for example, like on this constitutional amendment um piece, the AMSD may have a position paper, but our board does not necessarily go out and take positions on that as well.
That that is right. Yep. We we are very cautious and careful about what we go testify on. And then you're often informed, you know, my job's always to inform you about um that opportunity if it comes up. It's usually something much more specific um than than that larger constitutional amendment. Uh, so you're you're spot on with that. We would be letting you know if for example, if I was going legislature or if Ron was going on something, uh, we we keep you informed on on that because we're trying to represent all of you and in the position of our board and our district on issues.
Thank you.
If if I could uh chime in just a little bit, there definitely are times um after our legislative platform, which we'll get to in just a few moments, uh, is approved by the board. And those items may come up at the legislature. And so we definitely do go and testify on behalf of those and support of those. Again, because the board has taken action on those things.
Usually I reflect those uh opportunities in my weekly updates, so everybody's aware of uh our activity.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Simons. Uh, Director Dawson, welcome.
Okay, sorry. Um, no, Valerie, I've, you know, I I really respect um the work that you do at the legislative and the legislature, excuse me. Um, and I've, you know, really have enjoyed and learned a lot um from you. And, you know, I think that as I serve on AMSD, um, you know, the conversation is continuously around um getting me back to school, what supports we have as um as districts. Um, and the amount of kind of direction that is um that everybody seems to be part of, you know, from state reps to state senators to MDH, MBE. And so, you know, that a lot of that conversation around just some relief in term um in terms of really around the funding piece, um, knowing that we've all experienced this gap in um funding due to COVID. And and it seems like that's really been a huge focus on that as well as serving our students um across the state. Um,